Okay, good morning. It's 9:32 and I'm calling this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order. Please ask the clerk to call the roll to establish a quorum.
Good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the statement and meeting procedures.
Thank you. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will also be repeated Friday, March 17th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. When the Chair opens public comments for each agenda item or off-agenda matter, he will direct the clerk to call each name of the speaker. When I call your name, please come to the podium and make your comments. If you are unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, you will waive the request to speak and the clerk will file your request in the record for the meeting. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for each specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff or assistants or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. And thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you. I'd ask Supervisor Serna to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any opening statements myself, so we will move right into the agenda. Our first item is for public comments relating to matters not on the agenda. This is a chance for the public to comment on something that is not, that is not on our posted agenda, either our consent agenda or our timed matters. So with that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment for off-agenda?
We do. So it looks like we have several, and I'm going to call Roland Brady. Mr. Brady, you'll have two minutes to make your comment, okay?
You may or may not be aware of the number of camps that are in the watershed along the American River and Steelhead Creek. This is an example, one here, and as the water rises, much of this material gets into the creek, flows out to the Sacramento River into the American River. Some of these camps have as much as seven tons of debris, and we've cleaned up many, many of these camps. Here's an example along the American River in Township 9, showing in circles individual camps that appear in clusters, and this whole cluster is 312 feet long. So the entire bank of the American River is nothing but a sea of trash from abandoned camps. Now, although we've cleaned up a lot of these abandoned camps, the challenge is what happens when the water level goes down and spring comes around? Will people reoccupy these sites? And unless something is done, the answer is yes. So I have a proposal here. One is to, the camps that are there, you may not be able to prevent them because of Boise, however, they can be limited to a 15-by-20-foot footprint spaced 60 feet apart. All the possessions and items that are outside of this footprint can be removed legally, according to Boise. Allow no camps within 150 feet of the high watermark, and this is consistent with state, federal, and many county jurisdictions. There's nothing in Boise that prevents this from happening. So you can make ordinances that constrain the camping sites themselves, even if you can't displace the campers. So if you'd like a copy of that or you have it recorded, I could leave this with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And next will be Mr. Baker.
Hi Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to share my two minutes' worth. I'm Mark Baker with River City Waterway Alliance, and I'm here to speak, to ask you to do more to protect our waterways. I am sure you remember my five-gallon water jug of needles last time. We collected over 2,500 needles and about 7,000 batteries in the last nine weeks. If you have spent any time on our creeks and rivers, I am sure you know what a honey bucket is. We have found them during most of our cleanups. We have no idea how they got the name because there's nothing sweet about finding one. Last Saturday, while cleaning during the River City Waterway Alliance 13th cleanup event at Township 9, we found 35 honey buckets in one camp. We called, we called in our friends at Forensic Clean to deal with this toxic environmental pollution. It was too much for our volunteers to deal with. While spending many days on my kayak cleaning the lower reaches of the American River, I have seen many honey buckets float down the river. Often, this is how they are disposed of. It really makes me wonder if the E. coli problem is really just from birds and dogs. Most camps along our waterways have been abandoned due to flooding. Now this is time to act to prevent illegal camping from our waterways. Our river agencies need your support and funding to keep illegal camps from moving back in. River City Waterway Alliance, our all-volunteer group, needs your support too. We have cleaned more than two months, in two months, more than any other group has done in an entire year. Our expenses are very low, so donations are appreciated. I've given you all our card, which I don't know if you got it yet. Donations can be made to the Sacramento Creek Council using the QR code on the back of the card. Please show your appreciation and support and buy us some gloves and maybe a taco. This year, River City Waterway Alliance has completed over 35 waterway cleanups. That's just this year, removing nearly 200,000 pounds of trash and debris. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Ms. Sanchez.
Would you be able to zoom in on the video once it's?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let me get you set back up.
You can pull those microphones down a little bit, too.
Okay. I have laryngitis too, so pardon my voice.
Okay, when you're ready, and you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Hello to everyone. My name is Lisa, and I volunteer with River City Waterway Alliance. I help to restore and protect our creeks, rivers, and waterways within Sacramento, and I had no idea how contaminated our waterways were. I've come to understand the full scope and detriment here, and the level of contamination is astounding. While trying to figure out why our creeks and waterways are such neglected condition, I've worked directly with folks with county utilities and have come to understand that they are so inadequately underfunded and understaffed. As with most budgets, there isn't enough to provide all the necessary duties, but this seems extreme. With the exponential increase of trash and debris removal that has now been required and eaten away at their budget over the last five-plus years, but the revenue generated from the utility bill has not increased since about 1996. From my understanding, they are fee-based and do not receive any additional funds, so they are solely reliant on these. For context, within the Stormwater Drainage Division, there are about 60 employees who work for maintaining our creeks and waterways. Eight are supervisory and eight are vacant, leaving only 42 field staff to uphold and maintain 280 acres of grass to mow, 260 miles of creeks, sloughs, tributary streams, and waterways to clean, clear, and repair. Our plight is their plight. They care like we do about cleaning and cleaning the water and health, and keeping a healthy environment, but they don't have the funds to do this. They need help, and we need help. I'm here today to ask that their funds and budgets be increased for cleaning and debris removal of literally hundreds of thousands of pounds of trash lining our waters, to see how this department can gain access to additional money to support the necessary restoration of our waters. DWR is ultimately responsible for the quality and cleanliness of the channel within our waters, so let them restore it back to how they should be. We are pleading with the Board of Supervisors to help restore our waterways along with us. We feel that no one cares. Please give it, get us on the right track with how California and Sacramento should be in the eyes of the world.
Ms. Sanchez, you have about three seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna has a comment for anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, appreciate the good folks from River City Waterways being here again in chambers and reminding us of the condition of the Parkway and other areas that are, quite frankly, being decimated by occupancy, when it's obviously not the, it's not the design of the Parkway. The Parkway is not meant for people to live in. So what I would suggest, because as the last speaker made multiple reference to in terms of funding, I would, well, this is an invitation for you to make an appointment with my office so that we can have a conversation with our Parks Director and any staff that she might want to bring, so I can get a better idea of what your ideas are for enhanced budget. And so this meeting needs to take place before May. As I mentioned at the last meeting, when you were here, your advocacy can really make the, I think, the greatest impact in terms of influencing this Board and staff when it comes to our annual budget review. So I'm hopeful that you'll take me up on the offer to meet and have those discussions because I think it's invaluable that we, again, reflect our values in our budget. And I know that every one of us up here values the Parkway, as does the public, the people that we represent. I want to make sure that we have the resources available to do a better job. So I look forward to meeting with you. Thank you.
And thank you Supervisor Serna, and I'm certainly happy to join you in that endeavor too, if you're so inclined. Also, we will be having a hearing, I'm not, I don't know if it's set yet, for when this Board will get a report back on the status of the Parkway ordinance and the other infrastructure ordinance. That would be another opportunity to come and discuss some of these, you know, ideas you have. So I just want to add to my thanks for your advocacy and for your work on the Parkway. Okay? Madam Clerk?
Okay, our next speaker is Mr. Ryan Harris. Ryan, do you need the?
No, I do not, not today. Thank you. All right. So I was wondering if you guys had given Ethan Dye the paperwork, or do I have to have people show up to the bureaus that he frequents trying to get it to him? If you don't want to answer, that's okay. I'm just going to ask that you, sir, Mr. Rich Desmond, do not interrupt me during my time anymore. I am here to say public comments. If you don't like the way I word my comments, then I'm sorry. But last week, and I did ask if you guys were racist, and no one did reply, and I believe in California, no contest is considered a guilty plea. So now that I know what I'm up against, it makes sense why you guys continue to allow this treatment to take place to me. And again, Rich, you had interrupted me, and you guys are getting too comfortable with me again. I think you did that because Ann Edwards started that with censoring me when I had tried to send my condolences to the officers whose family passed away, and she stood up and censored me, did not allow me to do that. I don't know if you're aware of that. Pat Hume, and that was before you were here. It is on video. And this lady over here, your support and her coworker, she defended her, and she even lied on camera, saying, "Oh, no, that's not the agenda topic that it was." Well, if you go back, since everything is on camera, it clearly says what the agenda topic was on there, Sue. So you should pay better attention in these meetings. Nonetheless, I believe in one of my other meetings, I had said something about Gavin Newsom in Florida, and, well, Gavin, I'm still here. You haven't helped. You're not helping. I believe in, when I mentioned the Florida one, I had stated because of the high African-American population and given my last statement, and they're all response, or failed to response, I think that kind of validates what I had said last time. Nonetheless, my time is running down. There were a couple things that I wanted to address. Thank you, though, I did see the crew out there. They did replace the street sign, as well as the graffiti on the sidewalk, so I do appreciate that. I want to give you a pop on that. The gentleman had a funny comment. He said, "Man, we tried to get it done, we have the materials, but in the rich neighborhoods, if someone sneezes, a booger hits the road."
Ryan, you have about three seconds.
Okay. That interrupted my joke. No worries.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He said, "If a rich person sneezes in a rich neighborhood, a booger hits the road, and they replace the whole road." But in the poor neighborhoods, you guys don't want to do nothing with potholes the size of this podium. Have a good one.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Cynthia Shalit.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Shalit with Indivisible Green Team and also Solar Rights Alliance, and I was going to have another partner here today, but she, her street is flooded out, so she didn't make it, so I'm just going to read what she said. Actually, I'm here to thank you. We're with the Solar Rights Alliance Sacramento. We are here today to express our deep gratitude for your decision to implement solar APP+ under the California SV379. This is a software program that allows your, your planning department and your building department to issue permits for rooftop solar much faster and thus much less expensive, and so it saves the solar, the rooftop solar installers a lot of money. So thank you. This decision is much more than just a vote on a policy. It's an inspiring statement of your commitment to the cause of making our county greener and cleaner. Your decision has significantly reduced the barriers to renewable energy access. The solar APP+ program offers residential and businesses of Sacramento a more efficient and hassle-free solar installation process, and it will enable us to transition to green energy faster and cost-effectively. The county building department and Metro Fire are to be commended for their efforts to streamline the permit process. It has shown that you don't just talk the talk when it comes to environmental sustainability, you dare to walk the walk. This is an example of the kind of leadership our county needs, and I'm truly humbled and inspired by your commitment. I do not doubt that this decision will help create a cleaner, healthier, and more sustainable environment for future generations. Thank you again, Board of Supervisors, for your foresight and dedication in making this possible. You have my utmost respect. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have at least one caller on the phone. Can you please transfer the caller? Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes. And I'm closing that queue.
Hi, good morning. My name is Mari Erlinson. I'm co-coordinator along with my husband Bruce Morse of the Property Owners Association, working in cooperation with Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Some of us have been, have been working in conjunction with this organization for over 20 years, and we have 35 members in our recently-formed association. We have heard that the Sacramento County is planning to not renew its scattered-site shelter contracts with Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Specifically, these contracts fund approximately 28 leases for single-family homes that provide scattered-site shelter. These are transitional homes and important for the obvious reason of keeping people off the streets. A choice by the Board of Supervisors to not renew scattered-site shelter contracts will impact around 140 vulnerable people. Our question is, is the county planning on ending scattered-site shelter contracts with Sacramento Self-Help Housing? If so, what is the plan? What is our plan in place to shelter impacted individuals? I know there has been some challenging communication between property owners and the Department of Human Assistance, and my plea to the Board and to DHA is to let's see ourselves on the same team and increase the quality of communication with each other, for the sake of our community members and formerly homeless who need to be stably housed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call. Okay, that concludes your off-agenda public comments.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to the, our consent calendar, items two through 40, and I believe, Madam Clerk, you had a few notes on the consent items?
I do, thank you. For item 20, you're introducing an ordinance amending Section 90 of Ordinance Number 703 to establish a speed limit on Elder Creek Road from Southwatt Avenue to Hedge Avenue. You're waiving full reading of this and continuing to March 28th for adoption. You also have an ordinance for item 36. This is adopting the proposed ordinance to repeal Chapter 10.66, Title 10 of the Sacramento County Code relating to regulation of cruising. We do have public speakers on that item as well. And then for item 23, I do need the Board to drop this item. I'm going to set you guys up and read this into the record. Item 23 is the authorization to accept grant funding for the Domestic Cannabis Eradication Suppression Program.
And the Chair will move to drop that item?
Second.
Okay. Please vote. Do we have any public comment on this item before we drop it?
Item 23, let me double-check. We do not.
Okay. Please vote.
All right. Unanimous vote.
Okay, then I'll look to my colleagues, see if any, anyone has any, any consent item you'd like to comment on or remove from consent agenda. I'll start with Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a quick question on item 34. I'm not sure, I didn't cover this in my briefing, and last night, when I was looking at this, I, I just wanted to ask.
Can we have the clerk?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Item 34 is authorize the county purchasing agent or designate to perform all steps necessary to acquire a system solution necessary to support the development and implementation of the Sacramento County Social Health Information Exchange.
Yeah, so this is something that, over time, we've talked about this for years, and I've always been really excited about it because I perceived it would be, you know, it would help us connect different departments that are kind of isolated in their own silos and help us expedite services that might impact homeless people or people who are sick or whatever. The, and I'm planning to support it, but I wanted to ask if, I noticed the Social Health Connect, is that a software program? I see you connecting with me, Siobhan. Is that what we selected? Is that something that the federal or state government has selected that, and that's what everyone's going to be working off of?
Yeah, I can take that. Supervisor Frost, and then Director Lutz is on the phone too, so if he wants to add anything. But I will just say, this launch is an RFP process for us to find a vendor that will actually build out a solution for us. So it's not something the government selected. It is something that California is going to be requiring more and more counties to put some solution in place so that data systems can speak to each other, but they're not defining what that is. They're just giving us some guidelines and some parameters. So we are actually going to create a system that, an integrator, if you will, that will bring the various data systems, like the Homeless Management Information System or our various electronic health records, together to be able to speak to each other in order for us to more fully and wholly serve people, so they don't fall through the cracks, and so we can just provide better services to them.
Okay, so that bears the question, and I think that might be something that comes back in June when they come, when they determine what it, more what this looks like. You know, we're, I guess, approving for them to move forward with RFPs to solve problems. I'm curious as to, and I'm assuming the problems are the disconnect between the different entities, but what I'm interested in is how does that impact our medical privacy? Who's, who ends up in that system? And when those systems speak to each other, which, who's connected? Is it government and the medical community and the homeless services and child protective? And what are all, what are the connections, and how does that impact our medical privacy, which I hold very dear and want to, I think a lot of people would want to know that they're not, that their information is not somewhere out there in the internet? What are the, what are the protections for medical privacy?
Absolutely. No, I'm glad you bring that up. You know, I think creating the system is the easy part. All of the conversations, the legal conversations around sharing information and confidentiality and privacy are what's going to take some time, and it's something that we're starting to work through right now. I'll ask Director Lutz if he wants to add sort of the process that we'll go through for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Siobhan and Supervisor Frost. Tim Lutz, DHS Director, and 100% agrees supervisor on medical privacy. One of the most critical components to, that this will be patient consent electronically. So what that would do is manage, anyone whose data goes into that system would provide consent on who that data would be shared with. They would have the ability to revoke that consent and likely asked annually to update their consent to continue to share data. In terms of what type of data, that can potentially grow really large. Right now, we're looking at some core systems, HMIS, which is the homeless-based system. We're also looking at our correctional health information. This will help with when we're, when inmates are being released and helping with the CalAim initiative to link them to services. We also want to be having connections with some of our health records with community-based FQHC, federally qualified health centers, so that we can do care coordination. So what that would basically mean is you would have a more consistent singular intake for information that then could be shared, instead of having to ask the same sets of questions multiple times for someone who gets referred to services with behavioral health, someone gets referred to services with primary care, and then maybe some other community-based services like homeless navigation, housing, things like that.
So, and I know, I understand the concept of that. I know they're working with that with people, like children that have been molested in some way. You know, it makes it a lot easier if they can, you know, hear their testimony one time on a video, and then they don't have to go through it over and over again, which is traumatic. So I get that. So you're saying it, it's by consent, and so how does someone who's seriously mentally ill and homeless, who would be one of the first people who would probably need to be in that system, give consent?
If they don't have capacity to give consent, i.e. they're conserved, it would be the conservator that would provide consent for them. Otherwise, when they're doing the intake and assessment, they would be making the determination of somebody has capacity to, to consent to the release of information.
So the only way you would end up in that system is if you're opting into a service or a program that requires that continuity of communications essentially. So an average person wouldn't be in this system?
No.
Okay.
No, this would be specific toward, again, if you're enrolling, HMIS, I think, is probably the, the most immediate example because that's where we're coordinating entry into potential housing services. So somebody who was engaging in those services then would be, who we'd be looking to try and enroll with then, the she, and they would be asked to provide consent to share information.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to maybe just express my thoughts so that you'd be aware that that would be something I'll be always thinking about as we're coming back and looking at these technology, you know, technology seems to be growing, and, you know, I just wonder if it's, we're building, you know, if it's, we're building, you know, this infrastructure around us that's going to box us in and we're no longer to have any privacy or freedom, you know? These things, it's important to guard those things. It's part of what you should be thinking about. So I thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Frost, and thank you, Tim. You can't be with us in chambers, but I'm glad we were able to see your smiling face on the screen.
Thank you, Tim, yes.
Okay, any other supervisors like to comment or have questions on consent items? I don't see anybody in the queue, so let's move to, oh, Supervisor Hume.
I thought you were just going to go down the line. I do have a question on item 15, please. I know, there's a lot of training that has to happen here.
It's okay, it's all right. Yeah, I'm not going to comment.
Item 15 is authorizing application for and receipt of the pro-housing incentive pilot program funding.
Great, thank you. So I did participate in the briefing and read the staff report, and I noticed that the recommendation is to divide whatever funds are received between two of the items, item six and item 10. And after I went through and read some of the other items, you know, there's a couple provisions in there that I think would ease some of the crunch of housing shortage. So certainly I am in favor of item six, which is keeping people who are at risk of becoming homeless from becoming a homeless and providing that little lifeline support there. But then with item 10, it talks about new housing versus item one that would talk about the refab of existing housing, and also item two, which speaks more to workforce housing. And so I was just curious why we cherry picked out the two items, or the two sections that we did.
Supervisor, I'll have to check. I was going to see if Mr. Givens could come up and address that.
15.
Good morning, Member Hume. Troy Givens, Community Development Director. Item 15 here, as you're aware, is applying for this larger grant from the state. Those were the two that most aligned with current goals from the county, but we can look at those other options as well, if that's the board's desire.
Well, and I mean, I appreciate certainly the idea that if you spread the money too thin, you don't really do impactful work in any of the areas. And it's okay for right now, but maybe we can talk in the future about why those rose to the top when there's a couple of other line items that it seems like, you know, are worthy pursuits as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Hume. Yeah, and I agree, I had the same discussion yesterday. I mean, I love we're focusing on those two categories, but it shouldn't be to the exclusion of some of these other areas that this board has chosen to support, you know, maybe with other means. So thanks for calling that out. But this is very, this is great news, not only being selected as a pro-housing county, but also that we're applying for this. So thank you, staff. Okay, any other, I see no other board members queued up here, so we'll turn to public comment. Madam Clerk.
Okay, so for item 27, we do have a couple of folks here, and that is to approve a salary resolution amendment adding five full-time equivalent positions to support implementation of the community assistance program. So Ms. Woolley.
I just wanted to address agenda item, this agenda item, and acknowledge that I'm looking for advocacy from the Board of Supervisors to, and I'm very grateful to be here and to see how effectively you all work together and how you are balancing all of our needs. Last meeting, you passed a resolution to authorize $15 million to the County Board of Health. This agenda item would add another half a million dollars in salaries. Just wanted to say that that is not in line with the current economic conditions. The median household income is only $71,000, as reported by the U.S. Census, and most of those households do not get paid employer health insurance and retirement benefits. So half a million dollars could sustain seven Sacramento households or an equivalent of 14 individuals. And I wanted to just say that because of the last three years of county COVID policies, hundreds of small businesses did close their doors, and their employees lost their jobs, while government employees continued to work and have now received pay increases, while the non-government workers are still in the private sector and they're battling higher gas prices, higher food prices, higher utilities. So this particular item is not a good optic for the public to look at, and I'm urging you to vote no on this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have David Capizano.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors.
If you could stand in between the mics.
Okay.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you. The letter on the Social Health Info Information Exchange System does everything but explain what it is. Authorizing the county to acquire a social health information exchange system at a cost of $10 million needs to be further explained to the public before it expenditure of this size is approved.
So, sir, I'm going to interrupt you, just so you know, this is on item 27, which is funding related to Care Court. Did you have comments about that?
No. Okay.
But I'm getting ready to call item 34, and he has signed up for that. Is that this item that he's talking about?
I thought you called him, yeah.
I think he's talking about 15.
Oh, okay, no, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, not 15.
So you're signed up for two items, sir. You were signed up for 27, and then I also have you in there for 34, so I'm just trying to make sure what item I'm on.
I apologize.
So, no, that's okay.
This is the first time for me, I apologize.
Oh, no worries, no worries at all.
I'm a little nervous.
Did you have anybody else for 20? I want to make sure your comments are pertinent to the agenda item that you want to speak to. Was there anyone else on 27, on item 27?
Not in person, and so far right now, not on the phone, but we'll do the phones after.
Okay, continue, okay. Then call, make sure we just call out which item that he's speaking on, so.
Okay, and what item are you speaking on?
You can stay right there.
And what item are you speaking on, so I can read that into the record?
I thought I heard 34.
Okay, yeah, so now we can move on to item 34, which you are signed up for, and I'm going to restart the clock and let you start all over.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, go ahead and start.
All right. The letter on the Social Health Information Exchange System does everything but explain what it is. Authorizing the county to acquire a social health information exchange system at a cost of $10 million needs to be further explained to the public before an expenditure of this size is approved. What data is being collected and form whom? What is the method of exchange? It appears there is no limit on the increase of funding for public health, while many sectors of the budget are being squeezed. Crime is rising, and our roads and infrastructure are crumbling, and the cost of utilities, including electricity, gas, water, sewer, and garbage are off the charts, and while our taxes continue to rise, inflation reduces our purchasing power. Please vote no on this item.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Woolley, do you still, do you have a comment for item 34? Okay, thanks.
Again, thank you for your attention. I wanted to let you know that we are a group of growing concerned people that are looking at the agenda every time, and we're just new at it. We're looking at everything that's coming out, so thank you for your patience with us. When we saw this agenda item, we were unaware of what an exchange, an information exchange system would entail. I appreciate Supervisor Frost asking more questions so we can have more of an open discussion. Again, the, the information systems are awesome to share. I was glad to hear that private people are not going to be mandated to be in it. I do support conservatorship of people that cannot take care of themselves or make decisions for themselves. The best way to get people help is to help them, and so I absolutely support your efforts in helping the people that cannot help themselves. So we just want more information and make sure that the privacy of our data will not be shared, and thanks for that consideration.
Thank you. Next, for item 36, we do have two people signed up for this item, and so the first person is Ms. Francine Mata, or Mada. And this is the adoption of the ordinance to repeal the chapter 10.66, title 10, for the regulation of cruising. How about Ms. Francesca?
Hello, they're behind you.
Oh, sorry, sorry, thank you for helping me, I can't see. Hi, yeah, take your time. We'll start with Ms. Francine first, or whichever order you want to go, yeah. And you have, and you have two minutes, okay?
Okay. Good, excuse me, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Francine Mata. I'm legal and Chair of the Sacramento Low Rider Commission, also a proud member of the California Low Rider Alliance. I want to thank our Board of Supervisors, Frost, Desmond, Hume, Serna, you've always been active in our community. I appreciate you, everything you do, everything you stand for. Kennedy, for introducing. I also appreciate you, I appreciate all of you for giving us the time as we met with you the past several months. Sorry, I'm very nervous, this is huge. It's been 30 years, probably since 1992, since the shadows for us low-riding. We would see the signs going down, up on Franklin Boulevard, Martin Luther King Boulevard, Sunrise Boulevard, and approximately, there's approximately 40 low-rider clubs in the city of Sacramento, hundreds of solo riders. Low-riding in Sacramento probably became more frequent, popular in the late '60s, early '70s. I know that I have a huge family in low-riding, and it kind of, you know, during those times in early '90s, I remember my 15-year-old cousin looking at me because he would be targeted. He got brought in the office and said, "You're a delinquent, you're not going to go to college." You know, he used to drive his low-rider every day, and that's kind of the stigmatism, that's what he would be labeled as, you're not college material. He walked to me at 15 in '91 and said, "I'm going to leave school, there's nothing here for me," and had to go help his uncles and dad in upholstery, that he's been making cars beautiful in the city of Sacramento. I just want to say that low-riding is multicultural, mental health, we bring economic growth, community engagement, we do youth programs, we give back, we give, we work closely with law enforcement, we're doing two exhibits for Sacramento History Museum, California History Museum, and the Smithsonian, and also the electric low-rider car that we're currently building. I appreciate all your support, and I'm in favor of repealing item 36 and look forward to working with all of you in your districts. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Olivia Fonseca. I too am a member of the Sacramento Low Rider Commission. I also drive a 52 Chevy, and it's lowered. Right now, the laws mean that I shouldn't be driving my 52 Chevy cruising on the streets of, in the boulevards of Sacramento County, and it also, there is a law that says it shouldn't be lowered. So I want to thank the County Board of Supervisors for taking up this recommendation that we've given to repeal this ordinance, allow us to drive the boulevards that we are, you know, free to drive on, allow us to gather and to bring economic prosperity to businesses where we drive. You know, when we gather, we are a magnet for people to come and see our vehicles, and in doing so, that means people are buying food, buying gas, buying, you know, items at the retail stores because they want to come and see our cars. I thank you again for considering this repeal. I actually want to let you know, you would be the first county in the state of California to repeal the no-cruising ordinance, the first county. Yesterday, we were at a hearing for Assembly Bill 436. We are making efforts to repeal the no-cruising in the state of California, but today, today you have the opportunity to say the county of Sacramento has repealed cruising, and cruising is not a crime. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chairperson, we now have to take our phone comments, and we have several, and we're going to go in order. So we're going to close the in-person public comments and move to the phone, and then we'll close the phone comments as we take those calls. Okay, for item 27, if you could transfer the caller, please. Oh, that person dropped off, and so sorry, they were sending me a message. So if you could transfer the caller for item 36, and then that will conclude our public comments. Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Flavio Wisar. I have been on, I'm a community leader. I have been on the Sacramento Low Rider Commission and currently as an advisor to the SLC and a member of the California Low Rider Alliance. I am here today, and I just want to say thank you, Supervisors, here as we're discussing something that will affect the county of Sacramento and the whole entire, actually the state, as the state is also looking for the things that are happening here in Sacramento as the repeal, of course, happened citywide, but now this is in the county, and I applaud all of your efforts to work on something that will affect our county, our city, and the state, as we are today discussing something that will affect and has affected our communities. This will bridge, this will bridge and help our community to be able to work together as we've worked on, you know, projects with the city, with the different community leaders and different, you know, business districts, as the lowriders and the cars here that we're talking about in repealing this ordinance will help to bridge this, as it's been a divide, it's something that has caused much friction in our community for 30, 30-something years, over 30, 32, 34 years, and so this will just continue to bring together the efforts of the culture, of the community, and to be able to, you know, as this canvas on four wheels here, you know, wherever these cars go, there is an economic engine, you know, that comes to these districts. And I want to thank you and applaud all the efforts of all of you to be able to do this and to be the first county in the state of California, as yesterday, even yesterday, there was a discussion yesterday, as I don't know if you know about this, but AB436, that will actually repeal these ordinances across the whole entire state, is actually in the assembly now. And so thank you for what you're doing today, I applaud you, and thank you Supervisor Serna for all your efforts and helping this data come to pass. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you for your call.
That concludes public comments.
That concludes all of your public comments.
Okay, so before I ask for a motion on consent, I think it's just, I want to thank the Speaker specifically on item 36 for being here, and thank Supervisor Kennedy for bringing this forward, and obviously Supervisor Serna's leadership over the years. I mean, I think, don't be mistaken that the fact that this is on consent, I mean, it still, it means it's a big deal, but it means it's not controversial among us up here on the dais, and I'm very proud that Sacramento County is going to be the first county to revoke this. So with that, oh, Supervisor Serna's queued up.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to add my thanks as well to the Sacramento Low Rider Commission and all the clubs for their advocacy, not just as it relates to the action that we're anticipating here shortly to repeal the cruising ban in Sacramento County, but as was noted, advocating at the state level as well. I would just add too, just because it hasn't been necessarily explicitly referenced here this morning, but having grown up close to the Royal Chicano Air Force and other important parts of the Chicano culture here in Sacramento County, including the low-rider groups and clubs, it is also an expression of, I think, public art in a number of ways. If you haven't- If you, if you haven't seen some of the contemporary low riders these days, it is an amazing amount of work that goes into these automobiles, the engraving, the paint jobs, the chrome, the hydraulics, all of it. And I'm really pleased that this has come forward. I applaud Supervisor Kennedy for introducing the repeal, as he represents a broader portion of the unincorporated area. I think it's appropriate that it be carried by a supervisor that really has more at stake in terms of the political geography involved. So I do appreciate Supervisor Kennedy bringing this forward. But I just want to encourage anyone that is not familiar with low rider culture, take advantage of the next car show. As was also referenced, there'll be some museum exhibits at the local and even national levels. So please take advantage of those and get to know your, your low riding community. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Okay, I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar. Okay, a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that you did drop item 23.
23.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move on to item 41.
Item 41 is the presentation of resolution recognizing March 8, 2023 as International Women's Day and March 2023 as Women's History Month.
Okay, I believe, Michelle, you're going to tee this up and introduce our presenter slash recipient, right?
Yes. Good morning. Michelle Callejas, Director of Child, Family, and Adult Services. And I would like to introduce Erin Sebary, who is Chair of our Women's Commission. And she'll say a few words about International Women's Day and Women's History Month.
Thank you, Michelle.
Welcome, Erin.
Good morning, Chair Desmond and Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm here with the newest member of our commission, Bianca Brown, who's also the Chair of the Youth Commission. And that is by design, we have a seat for the Youth Commission member, and I wanted to give Bianca the first words this morning. We'll try to be quick. We know you're busy, but it's an honor to be here.
Hello, my name is Bianca Brown, and I am the Chair of the Sacramento County Youth Commission, as well as an active member of the Women's Commission. I've only been a member of the Women's Commission for a few months now, and I have already recognized the positive impact which we have made in the community. Although our county was among the last to formally establish a Women's Commission, we have sprung to action and organized many women-focused networking and community outreach events, such as the January event honoring recently elected female leaders within our county, which some of you guys attended. I am proud to be a part of the commission and advocate for both the women and the youth of Sacramento County. Thank you.
So Women's History Month, every March, as you know, is a time to honor women's history. And March 8, International Women's Day. Our commission participated with the State Commission this year on a build, Women's Build with Habitat for Humanity. Will be out again on March 29, and we invite anyone in the community who wants to go and help build. And there are eight houses in that community available for application at the moment. Want to just quickly take this opportunity to thank Michelle Callejas for her leadership and for her teams, staffing and support of the commission. We, I don't know what we would do without them. And as I've said before, when we think of good public servants in government, I think of Michelle and her team. I want to thank Ann Edwards and also Supervisor Serna, our fearless leader, and also Supervisor Frost for coming to our event recently, and all of you for your support. Since last March, we built our foundation strongly. We've earned a $25,000 grant from the State Commission, which has helped us building our work plan, which is underway. Sacramento State's Institute of Social Research has, is helping us build a database, and we have the first stage of that will be completed as of tomorrow, and we'll be sharing that information with you. Hi Supervisor Hume, welcome. I haven't seen you yet on the dais. It's nice to see you, my supervisor. We've attended, we've, we've been listening. This month's theme of Women's History is celebrating women who tell our stories. We've been listening to women's stories, and we will be coming to you in the next coming months with some of those stories that we've heard from women's organizations who are struggling with workforce issues, volunteer issues. Before, they struggled with financing and program, programmatic issues. Now the workforce issues are, are very high, and we will be, you'll be seeing us advertising, trying to connect women with those jobs that are available. We've been listening to women's stories, women who are on the verge of homelessness, and our priorities that we've delineated for this coming year are housing and homelessness, particularly older women and women on the verge of homelessness. We know that you're doing a lot on that. We thank you. As we develop our work plan, we would like to hear from you as to areas in this issue that you know better than we do, where we can be of help and where we can galvanize women to support. We're very concerned about the SNAP reductions coming on April 3, and how that might hit the most older and most vulnerable, folks who are at the same time hitting rent increases, and how that might be a higher risk for homelessness. As you know, there are many seniors on the streets, and older women in particular, we're concerned about. ARPA money helped us get through the childcare crisis. Childcare is another big issue that we're going to be focusing on. We're honored to be part of the coalition that the county is now setting with First Five and SCOE, and we're part of that coalition, and we will be working to support and lift up and amplify the needs for childcare, and of course, domestic violence. And we're really pleased to see conversations happening about trauma-informed and culturally competent, not necessarily having new shelters for each culture, but to have culturally competent and trauma-informed services. But we continue to be hearing the, the very incredible and intense level of violence that's happening and increasing, and we're also looking at, and we'll be discussing in our next meeting, what we want to do about that, and whether the firearms relinquishment state law that you all are aware of, and how that is being implemented in our county. And then lastly, but not least, is serving as a hub and a resource for you and for the community. I talked about the data. We want to connect, one of the biggest gaps we're hearing from women is connecting to resources. You all have provided so many wonderful resources in the county. How can we help that? We're working to build, and it's going to take some time and resources we don't yet have, but we're imagining it, a resource hub that can be digital and online to connect women to resources and also volunteer opportunities, whether that's, oh, my sister's house needs five beds next week, who can donate them? To a small organization needs a grant writer, we have five women lined up who said they can write grants, can you come now? These kind of connections and resources in addition to connecting women and girls to the resources of the county. And along those lines, next year in March, you're all invited. We're hoping to have a big Women's Resource Fair where we celebrate women and girls, but also celebrate all the resources in the county and do some real serious work of connecting. So without further ado, then I just want to introduce the Vice Chair of the Commission, Tameezaw Wash. And also I have with me Emily, our newest member of our team with the Friends of the Commission, Emily Pham, who is, thanks to the grant with the, with the county, supporting an executive part-time assistant for the Friends of the Commission. And I'm going to give them one minute each to talk, and then we'll do our proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Good morning. Again, my name is Tameezaw Wash, the Vice Chair. First, I want to thank Supervisor Sue Frost for attending our January 26 event, where we were really able to honor newly elected leaders in Sacramento. Thank you for attending that and celebrating those women. We sent out our, our banner, I mean, our pens in the holiday months, but Supervisor Hume, since you probably weren't there, we wanted to ensure that you received one. And so we brought our, our program as well as the, the pen for all of you to ensure you had that, as well as a flyer from the Friends. So again, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Emily Pham, and I'm honored to be here today to serve as the newly appointed Executive Assistant to the Friends of the Commission. And our focus is on supporting the commission in uplifting the voices of our local women and girls with this month's theme centered on women who tell our stories. And I hope you guys have been receiving our recent mail chimps, sharing all the information on events in Sacramento City and what's going on for this month's Women's History Month. And if not, please support us by checking out our Facebook page, which showcases all these local events and essential women figures for our daily spotlight series dedicated to Women's History Month. And our app is Friends of Sacwomen. And now onto our proclamation.
Thank you, Emily.
All the events of Sacramento County, too. Yeah.
Michelle, a couple, are you going to present the resolution now to them? Okay, and then I'll.
Does that work?
That, that works great. Why don't you do that? And then there's a couple of supervisors in, in the queue here as well.
Awesome. All right, so Erin, and all you powerful women, thank you for being here today. So recognizing March 8 as International Women's Day and March 2023 as Women's History Month, whereas Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. And whereas International Women's Day, celebrated worldwide, is a special day to observe and appreciate the contributions and social advancement of women around the globe, and is annually designated on the 8th day of March. Whereas this year's theme for Women's History Month is celebrating women who tell our stories, a tribute to women past and present who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling, including print, radio, TV, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. And whereas listening to the unique and powerful stories of women and girls in Sacramento County is central to the work of the Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, which evolved from the Blue Ribbon Commission on the establishment of a Sacramento Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and whereas currently more than 800,000 women live in Sacramento County, representing more than 51% of the county's population. Whereas in 2023, the commission will be listening to and sharing the stories of women and girls throughout the county as an essential part of its work to support the advancement of the status of women and girls throughout the county. Whereas throughout the month of March, we will celebrate all the women in our diverse communities who have shaped our history and have sacrificed to ensure greater opportunity for women from every walk of life, and especially all who continue working to make progress in our communities today. Whereas International Women's Day is a time of reflection and recommitment to the cause of equity and equality for women and girls in Sacramento County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, does hereby proclaim March 2023 as Women's History Month in Sacramento County and recognizes March 8, 2023 as International Women's Day, and further expresses gratitude to the women and girls of Sacramento County for their many notable contributions and for continuing to share their stories as a source of inspiration and transformation today and throughout the history of our county, state, and nation.
Thank you, Michelle. It certainly merits a round of applause for celebration and for, and for all the members of the Commissioner here today. Okay, I'll turn over to a couple of my colleagues for comments, first Supervisor Frost.
Well, first, I want to thank all of you for your leadership. I'm remembering back to the beginning, and I remember when I came to your event in January, I was thinking to myself, how did I get here? Because really, I remember when you were forging a new path. You didn't know where it would go, but you knew there was a need for someone to organize an effort to be cognizant of what are the needs of women and children in Sacramento County, and you made it happen. And, and I remember how Supervisor Serna kind of picked up the mantle and, and helped champion you to the finish line. And, and so I want to thank you for being willing to go through that and for all the hard work that you did even before you even knew it would happen. That's what leaders do. They forge new paths. And I, I'm really gratified because we have, I think, 67 or more commissions, and they serve in an advisory capacity to the Board of Supervisors. Some are more active than others, and you came out hitting the ground running, not only with the commission and your research and intellectual knowledge of the dilemma that you serve, but also to form a nonprofit, the Friends of the, of the commission that can help you fundraise. So you're, you're not thinking of this as what can the county do for us? You're, you're thinking like entrepreneurs and leaders, and I really hold you in high regard for that, because not everyone has the capacity or the ability to understand that. It helps us if you can be strong, and if everything you are isn't dependent on us, it makes you, you and your organization stronger and better. And I'm proud that Bianca is from my district, and I want to congratulate the young women who are taking a leadership role in the community. I remember when I was your age, and I, I was not, I wasn't there. I was shy, and I, I wasn't ready to get involved in that. I was too busy thinking about basketball and swimming, but, and other things. But I really want to congratulate you for your leadership, and thank you for all that you're bringing, and wish you, you know, all the best as you move forward in, with your plans with the connecting women, the, the hub that you're talking about. Super excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Frost. We're very delighted to have your support, and just to mention, Bianca is also a tennis champion. Just, just saying.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So Erin, thank you for being here and for all your rigorous leadership to, as was mentioned, get this off the ground in, in a condition that is somewhat rare when we look at other initiatives in the county when it comes to advocacy. I think I and certainly my staff are very well aware of the attention to detail that you have brought to your leadership role with the, the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. And I also want to thank the women that are standing behind you and those that aren't here with us today that are very much engaged with the commission for all of their time and energy that they put into it. You mentioned that you're interested in, in exploring what the commission might be able to do in terms of adding value relative to the various initiatives that the county is engaged with relative to homelessness. I would love to have a meeting with you and perhaps a handful of your other leaders in the, in the commission. Again, prior to budget, this is another invitation I'm going to make. Just understand kind of where you think the county, working with, through the commission, with the commission, might be able to do something very targeted relative to women and girls that are facing homelessness or that are homeless. And, you know, let's talk about, you know, maybe some, some resources to help you get there. I'd also encourage you, if you haven't already done so, to think about what you might be able to offer in terms of our growing refugee population here in Sacramento County, as you're probably well aware, especially refugees from Afghanistan, from other places that perhaps due to a number of factors, maybe don't or haven't valued women in our, in their society as much as we try to do here. So I think that might be, you know, an opportunity for, for the commission to really help us think through, again, what services ought to be enhanced, or what resources we, we ought to bring to, how we help those that have flat oppression from other places around the globe. So again, look forward to meeting with you and hearing your ideas, and again, congratulate you for all the great work you're doing.
Thank you. Welcome to that invitation, Supervisor.
Thank you Supervisor Serna, and I think we need to memorialize this with a photo here with all of you in front of the well.
Thank you Chair Desmond. Thank you. We'd be delighted.
Okay, well now we'll move on to Item 42, another presentation.
Item 42 is a presentation and adoption of resolution honoring Dr. Anne Arneal for her outstanding commitment and over 30 years of service as a champion for behavioral health.
Thank you. Dr. Quist, here to present. Good to see you Ryan.
Good morning. Yes, Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director, and good morning Chair and members. I am very excited and feel very lucky to be the one that gets to do this resolution. I would like to invite Dr. Anne Arneal to join me, please. The event that led to this is that Anne is finishing her term on the Mental Health Board. And first I'd like to say thank you Supervisor Serna for pointing her to the Mental Health Board. We're so lucky that she's been one of our members. Most of my informal comments are actually embedded into this resolution. So I have known her for, I don't know if I know how many years, a couple decades it seems. And so the actual informal comments I have are right here. So first, I want you to know that she has been a champion for behavioral health for 30 years. So whereas Dr. Anne Arneal has been a champion for behavioral health in Sacramento County and communities throughout the state for over 30 years, and whereas Dr. Anne Arneal served as the Executive Officer for the California Council on Mental Health from 1985 to 1993, and the California Mental Health Planning Council from 1993 to 2011, which is where I met her. These organizations were established in state law to advise the California State Legislature and state government on mental health issues. So it's sort of a state version of the Mental Health Board. Whereas Dr. Anne Arneal received a Master of Arts degree in psychology from University of California Davis in 2001, and a Doctor of Philosophy degree in psychology from University of California Davis in 2004 to inform her work in the field of behavioral health. And whereas Dr. Anne Arneal has contributed to the welfare of Sacramento County communities through her volunteer activities with Cal Voices and the Society for the Blind, and whereas Dr. Anne Arneal served as Sacramento County Mental Health Board and its various subcommittees from 2015 to 2022, including officer roles as Secretary from 2016 to 2017, and as Chairperson from 2019 to 2020, where she interviewed me and helped select me to be here in Sacramento County.
A great decision.
Agreed.
And whereas, in addition to the significant contributions, dedication, time commitment, and expertise that Dr. Anne Arneal has brought to Sacramento County, she has also been a significant contributor to the evolution of mental health in the state of California in her role with the California Council on Mental Health and the California Mental Health Planning Council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, County of Sacramento, State of California, hereby honors Dr. Anne Arneal for her outstanding services and proclaims gratitude for her contributions to this community, and further wishes her continued success in all the years to come. Thank you so much, Anne.
Well, thank you, Dr. Quist and Dr. Arneal. And a couple Supervisors have comments. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Chair. So first of all, I want to congratulate you, Dr. Arneal, for your years of service to this community and to the county. One of the great things about being a county supervisor is you get to appoint really, really good people that are not just well-intentioned, but really have the depth of intellect on specific subject matter to really help us. And by us, I don't mean just the board, but the whole structure of the county government to best serve our constituents. We can't do what we hope to do without people like you that are willing to give of themselves, give of their time. And I for one sincerely believe that behavioral health is one of the most important areas where we really need to lean hard on the people that know best how to shape policy and how to appropriate resources to make sure that our constituents have what they need to succeed when it comes to their mental health and their behavioral health. So I'm very proud that you've been a District One appointee for the time that you've served, and I hope you enjoy your time after your service here, and please don't be a stranger. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. And I jumped the gun a little bit here. Dr. Arneal, I was supposed to let you speak after the applause, so I'll let you speak, and then we'll turn to Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you very much. As a consumer of mental health services, it's been my privilege to be able to advocate for persons with mental illness and their families at both the state and county level. And it's also been my honor to serve with my fellow Mental Health Board members who are committed to enhancing the quality of mental health services in the county. And I'd like to thank Supervisor Serna for appointing me to the Mental Health Board and giving me the opportunity to serve the county. And I'd like to thank you for this honor.
Thank you. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you Chair. And I just want to, as somebody who's served with you on the Mental Health Board for a number of years, you know, it's a difficult position to fill. That's why there's frequently openings, and we strive to fill them constantly. But I don't think that any one of us has an easier job than what Supervisor Serna has had over the years. You know, you have been stellar, and you know, one of those wherestes should have mentioned, you know, the fact that over the years, I mean, you've been a true workhorse on the Mental Health Board. And when something needed to be done, nobody even needed to look one way or the other because Anne stepped up every time. And, you know, your work product has really made the Board better, has made lives better in Sacramento County. Your dedication, your commitment, you're quietly getting things done through leadership. And so, you know, I'm going to miss you. The Sacramento County is going to miss you. And thank you so much for your service.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy.
And thank you Supervisor Kennedy. I don't know, Madam Clerk, if we had any public comment on this item? No public comment? Well, Anne, thank you. I have not had the pleasure of meeting you, but obviously as Chair, I see all these resolutions coming across my desk, and yours is certainly one that was extremely impressive. And I'm sure there was a lot more. We could have gone to page two, but you know, we have a budget with those, so probably several pages. So thank you very much for your service, and I wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you.
One more round of applause, please. Okay, one more photo. Okay. All right, so we'll move on to Item 43. No, 43, yes.
Yeah, you're right. Item 43, review and comment on the First Five Sacramento Commission's 2024 strategic plan.
Good morning Julie.
Good morning Supervisors. Good to see you all and nice to meet you Supervisor Hume in person. I'm Julie Golelow, and I am your Executive Director at First Five Sacramento. So I'm excited for my 15 minutes of fame in front of you. I very rarely get to come up and speak with you, so I'm excited to be here. And I'm sharing with you our draft strategic plan. So every three years, the Commission gets a chance to update its plan. And we do this together as a Commission, and then we bring it to you all to get your feedback and comments, which I would then share with the Commission before its final approval. Okay, perfect. So our 2024 strategic plan is our roadmap to reach our goal that Sacramento County will have strong communities where children are safe, healthy, and reach their full potential. And this slide highlights our foundational principles. These are our values at the core of our plan. And while our principles didn't change much from the current plan to this new one, it developed using an inclusive and deliberative approach, fostering active participation from our community stakeholders, parents, funded partners, and non-funded partners this time. The strategic plan was inspired by the voices of those participants who shared their perspectives with us during its development. One significant change in our process was to center equity in this plan. Our efforts began in earnest in 2021, which is when our Commission adopted a resolution on racial equity and social justice. It was created by Commissioners, our 20-member Advisory Committee and staff, and it was both a declaration of racism as the root cause of our disparities in early learning and health and family resiliency, as well as our pledge to actively engage in dismantling those systems within the First Five world. We call that work Ready plus CR, and to us at First Five, that means racial equity, diversity, inclusion, and cultural responsiveness. Following our resolution, we created a Ready Action Plan, and we began to implement it. And many of the strategies that you'll see in our strategic plan are pieces of that action plan. Some of those things included creating a new funding stream, which I'll talk about, that would help us engage smaller grassroots nonprofits that haven't been able to partner with First Five in the past, and we're hoping to build those agencies' capacities to contract with us to serve new families of color who we haven't had a chance to reach before. And additionally, there's also money in this new plan to continue and deepen our engagement of parents and community. White supremacy culture cuts across most, if not all, of the systems that serve children and families. And staff shared this slide with Commissioners and acknowledged that several of these practices that you'll see on the slide have actually shown up in our own earlier strategic planning processes. And this sort of became our why. It's why we changed our strategic plan process to be more inclusive of parent voice, and why we extended our timeline to ensure that we could collect meaningful data that could be shared with the Commissioners. In the end, we understood that it's not about the right and wrong of our prior processes, but more just about knowing better and doing better. And this plan is our attempt to intentionally do better this time around. So this slide just highlights some of the ways that we made a departure from our prior strategic planning approach. Rather than using community feedback to sort of reaffirm or reprioritize things that we were already doing, we went out and talked to community who didn't really know much about First Five, so parents who weren't already in our system and using our services. We spoke with a wide array of leaders and line staff from both our funded partners and non-funded partners, and we had multiple focus groups that helped us develop a parent survey. That parent survey was widely distributed in the community. We had over 850 parents tell us what they thought we needed to be doing. And as a result, we heard some concerns that hadn't shown up in prior plans. With that input, the Commission created a new mission statement and a new conceptual framework, which is before you. It puts children and families at the center of our work and shows our five new priority areas interlocking around those children and families. And then finally, it's all encircled by our core functions of which First Five Sacramento engages every day, which is to convene, invest, advocate, collaborate, and build capacity. We all know that budgets are value statements, which is why this slide speaks to the Commission's evolving values probably more than any other in the presentation. It highlights the five priority areas and allocates funding to each of those areas. So one thing that you'll see pretty clearly is that more funding was allocated to racial equity and its corollary parent partnership than in prior strategic plan years. And that will allow us, again, to provide a funding stream directly to smaller nonprofits to provide some direct services to kids and families of color. Additionally, with a little increase in our systems improvement funding, that allows us to have the staff time to convene, sort of set tables around improving and streamlining systems that serve children and families, as well as to search for new dollars. I think you all know that we have a declining revenue stream, and it's why every year, every time I come before you, it's to say that we have another small decrease or another fiscal cliff, as we'd call it then, because we know that we won't be able to fund direct services to the extent that we have over the past 20 years. So we're slowly making that pivot away from a sole focus on direct services and including now more and more of our systems work. So the strategic plan is a really sort of 30,000-foot high-level document. For each of the five priorities, there are one to three outcomes that state what we would like to see by 2027. And then there are two to four goals for each outcome that sort of talk about the how we would do that. And then finally, some sample strategies which will be expanded in our implementation plan, which comes to the Commission in June for approval. So there's just some sample strategies in each of these priority areas. This is just an example, but each priority area has one of these in the strategic plan. This is quality childcare, which you've heard today just from our Women's Commission, is definitely a high priority. And I'll tell you, it's always the highest priority that comes from our parent surveys. In this, we have our priority quality childcare, our outcome to connect that children are connected to affordable, quality childcare and early learning. And then we have several sample strategies, which, as I mentioned, will take out to the community and get more feedback. The three-year spending plan totals 44.6 million. Approximately 8% is for administrative expensive, 3% for evaluation, and then 89% goes out into programs. These percentages are pretty much in line with all of our prior strategic plans. And these funds, I want to say, only reflect the money that we get in Prop 10 revenue. So it doesn't include other funding that we've gone out for, that we compete for, that we get from First Five California for special projects, or that we partner with other county departments to bring in through First Five and then out to the community. So just to sort of put that in context, the current fiscal year, we have about $12 million in Proposition 10 money, but we leveraged an additional $7.6 million from outside services in order to, and all of those funds are really for our direct supports and services through our funded partners. So I just wanted to highlight a couple things we learned this time around. By reaching parents who are primarily not already engaged in services, we heard new voices, which surfaced some new and different needs than in our prior years. So I've mentioned affordable childcare is always at the top of the list, but we heard more loudly than ever before that more than, more loudly than ever before that basic needs, really basic needs, like healthy foods, diapers, financial assistance, stable housing supports were also right up there at the top. We heard from parents that they're super clear that they want a way to be active in our decision-making, in our processes. They want more opportunities to participate on our advisory committee and to also be commissioners one day. And we also, we also know that we have a situation coming with the flavored tobacco ban, which we fully support, but does have an impact on our revenue. Looking at anywhere from a 7%, that's the lowest, to like 20% is the highest rate that we've seen so far as an impact to our local revenue. And so our efforts to work better with systems and to bring in more dollars, alternate dollars that are not Prop 10 dollars, it's going to be really important for us going forward. And some new approaches, which are laid out in the plan as well, but kind of to what I was saying earlier, maybe some mini-grant programs specifically for grassroots agencies, some technical assistance and capacity building for agencies to serve new populations for us. Perhaps opportunity to do a, what's the word? I'm looking for participatory funding rather than competitive funding, so bringing partners together in a room to participate in a funding opportunity rather than going against each other for the funding. All just different ideas that came out. And finally, while, while our tried and true strategies have certainly improved the lives of thousands of young children and families, more and different strategies will be necessary to successfully address our lingering disparities. So we saw a lot of data that show that we've been making good strides, but we still have disparities to contend with. One slide about implications for the county. So the, so our current plan and our future plan, the 2024 strategic plan, have the same amount of funding. We didn't have to take a fiscal cliff this time. We had reserves, and we're using those reserves to keep a consistent amount of funding going forward for the next three years. But as our revenue declines, I mentioned, we have been making a shift to include more systems work and have more ability to go out and bring in new dollars for those direct services that we are less and less able to fund as time goes on. So we do anticipate a potential reduction to some direct services. These are the ones that the county and First Five jointly fund. I'm not saying that any one of those would be cut, but there is a possibility that cuts would come. Again, those decisions are made in June when, when we've taken this plan out to the community again and gotten their feedback on specific strategies and what services they tell us that they need. So we're currently funding several county programs. And like I said, we don't really know the exact reductions potential, but there may be some. And so the commission has reviewed this draft already last month, and they reflected positively on our process and on the outcomes of the, of the draft. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about our strategic plan. And then if you have comments, to bring them back to the commission, where our chair, Supervisor Serna, will be bringing this forward for approval by the full commission at our April 3 meeting, with any comments that you all bring forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. And you, there are some supervisors queued up to provide you with some of those comments. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. First thing, nice to see you in person, Julie.
Nice to see you, too.
And I just, you touched on an issue that's got to be tough in your position when you're talking about the ban on flavored tobacco, because ideally, you want to see dwindling resources as those taxes stop flowing in.
Right.
With regard to that, you have the slide that showed some of the county programs that you partner with us and help fund. And obviously, the needs are always going to be more than the resources. I get that.
Yes.
But I would like to put a plug in. I met with the folks from the Birth and Beyond program the other day. And, you know, having toured the youth detention facility and our central placement stabilization unit and seeing what happens to families when they're broken apart and when these kids are, are put out, you know, into the system to take care of them versus what could happen farther upstream with more counseling, support, education. And so, again, there's always going to be multiple people tugging at the apron for more funding, but to the extent that we can keep those programs running, I certainly am in favor of that.
Absolutely. And I have to say, so many parents and providers came to our retreat. The commissioners got to hear from a full house, speaking to the importance of those place-based, the family resource centers, being in community and providing supports. That also was very, very high on our strategies list.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you, Julie, for the presentation. Obviously, I was, I've been privy to a good deal of the detail behind the development of the draft strategic plan, including participating in the retreat that was just mentioned. And I just wanted to, again, say publicly how thankful I am to Julie for her foresight to have a number of different resources come to bear on the development of the plan. This is, I think, the third one that I've been involved with since first chairing the commission back in 2011. And I could say without a doubt, I could assure more, it's probably more appropriate, I could assure the board that this is the most deliberate draft strategic plan that I've seen developed, because, again, with Julie's leadership and all the input from her very capable staff, we had consultants making sure that parents were heard, caregivers were heard, the various CBOs that First Five works with was, were heard. And there was a great deal of work behind the scenes to make sure that we left no stone unturned. So I am really grateful to Julie and to all of our First Five personnel for doing a terrific job to get us to this point. Again, this is in draft form. The process is to present it to the First Five Commission, which has already happened. This is the board's opportunity to provide some kind of last-minute input. But I look forward, as Chair, to final adoption. And again, it'll be with a great deal of gratitude when that happens.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And I'll just provide a couple of comments as well before we go to public comment. I'm sure, I'm sure we do have some public comment on this item, do we?
I don't know. Not have any public comments.
Oh, we don't? Okay. Well, I'm glad Supervisor Hume mentioned what he mentioned, because I, too, met with some of the folks from the Birth and Beyond Centers and representatives from Black Child Legacy Campaign incubator sites. And want to put my own plug in for that being a very big concern of mine as well, because these, these locations in the community, particularly in some of the environmental justice communities, is so crucial. And as Supervisor Hume was describing, and, you know, an ounce of prevention's worth a pound of cure, and, and that's a cliche that we don't hear too often these days, but I think it obviously rings very, very true in this context. So, okay, I don't see any other supervisors keyed up to speak, and we don't, just confirm, we don't have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay. Julie, well, thank you very much for being here, and thank you Supervisor Serna for your leadership as Chair of the Commission. I hope, you know, you got a little bit of feedback anyway, and look forward to the final product.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You, too.
Chairperson Desmond, may I call Item 42 back into the record and have your board adopt the resolution?
Oh, yes. Flo, you and I discussed that yesterday. I apologize. So we have to take a vote on this, correct?
Correct. And so I'll read that back into the record. This was the presentation and adoption of resolution honoring Dr. Ann Arneal for her outstanding commitment over 30 years.
And I will move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Unanimous vote.
Great. Okay, then we'll move on to Item 44.
Item 44, Introducing an Ordinance Amending Sacramento County Code Chapter 4.07 Relating to Tobacco Retailers. You're waiving full reading and continuing to March 28 for adoption.
Okay. And Joyce, you're presenting.
Good morning. I'm Joyce Rinnison, interim Finance Director, County here. And I'm going to introduce this ordinance, the Sacramento County amending Chapter 4.07 of the tobacco retailers. The amendment was presented in response to the Board in September 13 of last year. And we're trying to align our ordinance more closely to the City of Sacramento's products for tobacco retailer ordinance and to defer retails from selling tobacco to those under 21, and provide some discretion so that they can stay a portion of the first suspension in a remedial measure to complete for the license. Additionally, the ordinance is included in the changes to allow the department to have discretion for the 30-day suspension in order to resolve appeals rather than tobacco retailers coming before the Board, with you not having the ability to act upon those things for a final determination on the appeal. And I'd like to introduce Blake with County Council to go over the ordinance changes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce.
And Blake is usually the one who hears the Board struggling with what we can and cannot do in these situations, so.
It is.
Thank you, Blake.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Supervisors. As Joyce said, she summed it up well. This is an amendment to the ordinance in response to the Board's request to us to give some more discretion for tobacco retailers who are found in violation. The discretion we imposed here only applies to the first violation, so for second, third, fourth, subsequent violations, there is no discretion. For the first violation, this Board previously had split up the imposed penalty of a 30-day suspension into two 15-day suspensions. What staff did was we took that two 15-day suspension, we allowed staff to split it up in the future, but we also did something that allowed staff to stay the second portion of the 15-day suspension. In exchange for that stay, the potential violator or the subject violator will have to meet certain remedial measures that staff will request that they do. Point of sales with driver's license swipes to ensure that purchasers are over the age of 21. Training, staff reimbursement for the inspection costs to go out and inspect on the suspension, potential training, and on any other remedial measures that might be appropriate for that violation. The other main change that the ordinance did, as Joyce mentioned, is it took away the appeal to this Board. It aligns with what the City of Sacramento does. It aligns with what Sacramento County code enforcement and other departments do with their appeals, where the ruling of the hearing officer is the final ruling for this Board. Any subsequent appeals will go to the Superior Court through a writ. With that, if there are any other questions or any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Blake. I don't see any supervisors keyed up.
Not have any public comments.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your efforts and staff's efforts to align this with, I think, what the Board has articulated to you on a number of occasions. And on the one hand, wanting to ensure that we enforce the ordinance and other ordinances, not just in this context, but other contexts, that this Board establishes, while also keeping a focus on, you know, education. What do we want to do ultimately? We want to gain compliance. So this seems like a very common sense approach, and I like the consistency. I think that consistency across jurisdictional lines is very important for small business owners, so. Well, I don't see any comments, no public comment. I would entertain a motion then on this item.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the attached ordinance. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you, Chair.
Item 45, Receive a Second Quarter Fiscal Status Report and Approve an Appropriation Adjustment Request for Various Departments.
Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the Board. I'm Amanda Thomas, County's Chief Fiscal Officer. And I'm here this morning to present the fiscal year 2223 Second Quarter Fiscal Status Report, which includes revenue and expenditure estimates as of January of this year. So first, I will just start off with an overview before providing more detail on the estimated revenues and expenditures. As I mentioned, the revenues and expenditures included are as of January, so they're based on the first six months of actual data for this fiscal year, and then estimates for the remaining six months of the fiscal year. Overall, nearly all departments are estimating expenditures to be lower than budgeted, and I'll discuss some of the reasons for that later in the presentation. While overall budgeted appropriations are more than sufficient to cover estimated expenditures, some budgets do require adjustment to either increase or transfer appropriations. So we do also have some recommendations for budget adjustments where necessary. In terms of revenues, discretionary revenues in the general fund are estimated to be slightly higher than budgeted. However, I do want to note that as we look forward to next fiscal year, we are expecting a slowing of growth, particularly for our sales tax revenues, reflecting lower expected growth both in sales activity as well as continued slowing of inflation as the Federal Reserve continues to raise interest rates. So, so we are seeing an increase versus budget compared to this year, but just want to point out that projecting forward a slowing of growth, we've seen some pretty rapid growth in recent years, and are projecting a slowing going towards next fiscal year. In the general fund, that combination of slightly higher estimated revenues and lower estimated expenditures results in an estimated fund balance carryforward of $110 million, which would be an available one-time funding source in, for the fiscal year 2223, 24, excuse me, the 2324 budget. So looking forward to next year, that becomes an available one-time funding source. So this chart shows how this estimated amount available for the fiscal year 2324 budget compares to the actual general fund available fund balance carryforward historically, going back to the fiscal year 1314 budget. And you can see that that $110 million is much lower than the last two years, where it was approximately $240 million, and really much more in line with kind of what we've seen historically for this figure. And this is really the result of a smaller variance between budgeted and estimated and actual revenues and expenditures. So this year, we have a smaller variance than we did the last two fiscal years. And that's really been the case, I think, you know, sort of reflective of relatively more stability and predictability as we move out of the pandemic. So the last two fiscal years, you know, we saw a lot of volatility, both revenue and expenditure-wise, things that were not anticipated when the budget was developed, materializing during the year, and we've seen less of that volatility, I think, reflected in the estimates this year, and something moving more in line with historical experience. So looking a little closer at discretionary revenues, this chart is showing us a comparison of discretionary revenues by category for the adopted budget, which you see on the left-hand side, compared to the current estimate based on second quarter results. And you can see the overall pretty slight increase that I mentioned, but this chart also kind of gives us a nice visual of what exactly makes up our discretionary revenues. So property taxes, shown in blue here, you can see are by far the largest source of discretionary revenue. And then that's followed by sales tax revenue, shown in red, and then smaller amounts for the other categories that are shown here.
Ms. Chair. I apologize. Supervisor Serna. Thank you. Amanda, can you just highlight by way of example, a few other, some examples of other revenue?
Sure. So some of the things that are included in other revenue are actually sort of what I would consider to be property tax-based. So we get some revenue that flows through former redevelopment agencies. That's included in other revenue. We also have revenue neutrality payments that we receive from, you know, cities that... We also have revenue neutrality payments that we receive from, you know, cities that were annexed out of the county, and that, you know, that's sort of a way of, in effect, making the county whole for property tax payments. So those things are included.
By way of tax sharing agreements?
Yes, yes, tax sharing agreements would sort of be another form of property, what I would consider property tax-based revenues. Other intergovernmental payments that are discretionary in nature, so I was going to talk a little bit later on about some backfill revenue we're receiving from the state, there are now two different sort of tranches of that, so there were some fines and fees that were eliminated by state legislation, and we've received some backfill revenue. So those are some examples.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to have you highlight that mostly for the public's benefit since other revenue is the third highest category that's listed here.
Correct, yes, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Serna.
So looking a little bit more specifically at the numbers for discretionary revenues and reimbursements, they are estimated to be almost $11 million, about 1.4% higher than budgeted, so an estimated total discretionary revenues for this fiscal year of $837 million. Property tax revenues account for about 70% of that total, and they're estimated to be just slightly higher than the budgeted number, really within a million dollars, for a total of $565 million. And then sales tax revenues, well, just at just about 18% of the total, or, you know, $150 million, they're accounting for the largest variance between the budgeted and estimated numbers, so that being a positive variance of $8 million or 5.5% increase compared to budget. Those other revenues that we just talked about, estimated to be about $3 million higher than budgeted, and that is primarily as a result of some of that backfill revenue that I mentioned, so AB 199 is resulting in some revenue coming to the county from the state, and this is to backfill for revenue lost as a result of the elimination of certain criminal justice fees. We will be returning to the Board at a future date with a detailed reporting on the actual revenue loss, and then making recommendations for the use of this funding in the upcoming budget process. The other important category of revenues that we often talk about are what we refer to as semi-discretionary revenues, and that includes 1991 and 2011 realignment, and then Proposition 172, or public safety sales tax revenues. These revenues are largely based on statewide sales tax revenues, and then to a lesser degree on vehicle license fee revenue. And while they're not general fund revenue, they are transferred to the general fund to offset eligible expenditures, and in most cases, that reduces the amount that would otherwise be funded with the discretionary revenues. So overall, semi-discretionary reimbursements are estimated to total $1.02 billion, so that's actually more than total discretionary revenues, with a relatively small net increase compared to budget at just $2 million. And then this net increase is actually the result of a $17 million increase in Calworks-related reimbursements, and I mention that because that's actually the category that does not offset the use of discretionary resources. And then a $15 million decrease in other reimbursements, which is really resulting from estimated eligible expenditures being lower than the budgeted number, so we don't have as much expenditures that we can transfer this semi-discretionary revenue in to offset based on the current estimates. So now I'll turn to talk about estimated general fund expenditures and departmental revenues, which kind of gets us to the net amount that needs to be funded with the discretionary and the semi-discretionary resources that I just talked about. So overall, departmental expenditures are estimated to be $209 million or 5.7% below budget. So while this variance between budgeted and estimated expenditures is smaller than we've seen the last two years, it does primarily result from continued although lessened impacts associated with economic disruption resulting from the pandemic. So we've seen things including, you know, higher-than-anticipated position vacancies and delays in filling positions, so that's translated into reduced expenditures compared to budget, and then also delays in supplies and equipment and project delays. Additionally, there were substantial new or enhanced programs, or what we call growth, included in the fiscal year 2223 budget, that are budgeted for the full fiscal year but have not incurred expenditures for the full fiscal year due to mid-year implementation, and in some cases, hiring challenges and other delays that have resulted in lower-than-anticipated spending.
Amanda, can I stop you there? Supervisor Hume has a question.
Thank you Chair. Amanda, I was an English major as well, so, you know, but to Director Supervisor Serna's point, you know, it's important that the public understands this, and so on this slide that's up there right now, in putting those numbers together, 209 million plus 70 million plus 349 million, how does that equal 97 million? And so I'm just trying to follow, and I know that when we sat down for our briefing, you talked about the county has total expense picture versus net county cost, and I assume that's a portion of what's being discussed here, is that these are interdepartmental costs and not actual costs, and so I'm just trying to drill down to how much did we anticipate spending out of pocket versus where we are now, because for a $97 million windfall, if you will, to turn into only, I see it as 7.9 million going to contingency or reserves, that seems to be a disconnect to me. And then I don't understand how the math works that each of these below-budget amounts only results in a 97 million decrease. And I apologize if my question is confusing, but that's how I consider this slide.
Sure, so the math may be a little confusing. I think what we're trying to get at is departmental expenditures are lower, but the revenues and the reimbursements that are going in to offset them are also lower, so we have a net reduction of 90, so we have 209 million less expenditures, but those are being offset by $70 million less in revenues and $43 million less in reimbursements.
Got you, and that's how we get to the 97 million.
Right, so the 97 million is sort of the net reduction in what needs to be funded with our discretionary and semi-discretionary resources.
Okay, and so then the second part of my question would be then, is how is that 97 million being absorbed? Is that the items, you know, A through Z through AA in the staff report?
So you have raised a very important and complicated question, which is that what the staff report is doing is it is those recommendations on the appropriation adjustments that I'll address at the end of the presentation. We are really only adjusting for when we need increased appropriations in certain budget units, because otherwise, we would not have the authority to spend the money in those budget units. So in very few budget units, we don't have enough budget for the expenditures, and we need to increase those budgets to account for that. In most budget units, we have lower estimated expenditures than appropriations, and we don't need to adjust the budget to account for that, but we are, when we're estimating what's going to be available at the end of the year, we are considering those lower estimated expenditures, and that's really what's, the net of all of that is what's reflected on this slide. So in other words, we're estimating that we'll have $110 million net that is not spent, was budgeted to be spent, but will actually be available to carry over to next fiscal year, either for appropriations or to enhance reserves. But our budget is not being adjusted to get to that $110 million number. We are just estimating that based on our current results, and obviously, that estimate will be refined as we move through the year, and we'll have an actual number, you know, when the year is closed, that will then reflect in the September budget when the actual fund balance is known.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so really, I think, just to finish this out, you know, I sort of, I kind of hit on the math here, so essentially, we have lower estimated expenditures. Because of those lower expenditures, there are lower departmental revenues and reimbursements, which in many cases are sort of cost-based revenues that are being received, so if the costs are lower, the revenues are also lower, and then that results in that net reduction of $97 million that needs to be funded with discretionary and semi-discretionary resources. To say that more clearly, the amount that needs to be funded with discretionary and semi-discretionary resources is $97 million less than what we budgeted. Let's see. So actually, before I leave this slide, I do just want to finish out the math equation. So that $97 million less requirement here, add to that the $2 million in additional semi-discretionary reimbursements, and the $11 million in additional discretionary revenue, and that's how we get our $110 million. Okay, so this slide covers those recommended budget adjustments that I mentioned, so we kind of talked about the overall fiscal status update, and then these are those very discreet specific budget adjustments that are required just in those budget units where expenditures right now are estimated to exceed appropriations. Most of these adjustments, so those that you see, you know, listed under the first bullet, are funded by additional revenue or budget transfers, they don't result in additional budgeted net county cost or use of discretionary resources. So these include a transfer of appropriations between budget objects in the coroner's budget, an increase in appropriations funded with revenue in the environmental management department, and then additional transfers between budget objects and correctional health, child support services, regional parks, and the clerk of the board budget units, an increase in appropriations funded with a reimbursement in the probation budget, and then a transfer of appropriations from the public defender budget to the conflict criminal defender budget, and finally, an increase in appropriations funded with revenue in the clerk recorder budget. We are also recommending one adjustment with net county cost, which is an increase in appropriations for voter registration and elections resulting from unanticipated costs associated with the 2022 election, and then this is primarily funded with additional revenue, but does have a net county cost of approximately $350,000, and that is funded with general fund contingency. And then finally, the semi-discretionary reimbursements that I talked about earlier, those also require certain budget adjustments to transfer those additional funds, in some cases, to the general fund. With that, the recommendations are to receive the second quarter fiscal status report, which you've done, and then approve the appropriation adjustment request number 2023, 2023, coincidentally.
Thank you Amanda. Look my colleagues for any more comments or questions. Don't see anybody queued up. Any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay, and I know this requires a four-fifth vote, I believe. Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, if there are no questions or comments, Mr. Chair, with appreciation to Amanda for doing a great job of explaining a complicated subject, I'd like to move the item.
We have a first and a second. Before we vote, I want to say, Amanda, have you ever seen the movie The Matrix? I'm sure you have, right? I mean, every time we talk budget, I think of, you know, Neo in The Matrix, how at the beginning, he's completely confused about everything, but towards the end, he sees the whole world in code, and that's obviously how you are. You are at that level, and I hope to get even somehow close to that at some point during my tenure here.
Don't chase the white rabbits.
So that's right. But thank you, yes, thank you very much. I want to echo the thanks and appreciation to you, so please vote.
Thank you. Unanimous vote.
Okay, we'll move on to item 46.
Item 46 is the Popeyes Restaurant on North Watt Avenue. This is for a use permit, special development permit, and design review for a property located at 6849 Watt Avenue, and this is within the North Watt Avenue Corridor Plan in the North Highlands community. The environmental determination is exempt. So far, I don't have any speaker slips, but if we do have folks who are going to speak on this item, I need to take an oath.
Okay, be advised, Mr. Holloway. Okay, good morning Jessica.
Good morning supervisors. Oh, awesome, okay. So yes, Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I'm here to give your presentation on the Popeyes North Watt Corridor Project this morning. So as usual, some location and setting information. The project site is 6849 Watt Avenue. It's approximately 450 feet north of the intersection of Watt Avenue and Elkhorn Boulevard. It is within the North Highlands community. The site itself totals about three-quarters of an acre. It was previously developed with a commercial building that has since been demolished, and it has been vacant since 2008. Surrounding land uses are mixed, and they include vacant to the north, to the east is a retail shopping center, south, an auto repair shop, and west, a vehicle storage yard. The project site is located within the North Watt Avenue Corridor Plan. The Board of Supervisors adopted the corridor plan in 2012 as a special planning area ordinance with the intent of guiding redevelopment of the area and transforming North Watt Avenue into a transit-oriented, mixed-use urban corridor. To accomplish this, the corridor plan includes its own land use districts, permitted use tables, and development standards. This slide shows the scope of the North Watt Corridor Plan with a very tiny star up at the north part indicating the project site, and then a zoomed-in aerial of the site in a closer context. The project site is located in an area of the corridor plan that is referred to as the commercial core of the Elkhorn District Center, which is envisioned in the corridor plan as an employment and residential mixed-use center. To support the goals and the vision of the corridor plan, individual parcels were assigned subzones that either focus on mixed-use or transit-oriented development. The project site has a subzoning of commercial mixed-use, or CMU. The intent of the CMU zone is to promote a high-intensity shopping and service district within the Elkhorn Commercial Core. The zone has both allowed uses and specific development standards, which I will discuss later in this presentation. Much of North Watt Corridor, much of the North Watt Corridor consists of vacant or underutilized commercial properties, and this site is no exception. The site, as mentioned earlier, was initially developed, we believe, between 1957 and 64, and it had about a 2,800-square-foot commercial building on it. The building became derelict and was demolished in 2008, and the site has remained vacant since that time. There's no history of other entitlements, and while there have been code cases open for illegal camping on the site, there are no open code cases currently. Now to the project under review. The development would consist of an approximately 3,000-square-foot fast-food restaurant with a drive-through, parking area, and indoor and outdoor seating areas. Access would be from one driveway off of Watt Avenue and would be limited to right-in, right-out traffic patterns. The development proposal requires approval of a use permit to allow a drive-through with amplified sound within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, which in this case is both the undeveloped property to the north and a property developed with multifamily residential across Watt Avenue to the east, both of which have a residential mixed-use II zoning designation under the SPA. The project is before the Board today because deviations from the corridor plan's development standards are permitted through a special development permit, but only at the Board level. Further, the corridor plan requires two additional findings for granting the special development permit, which are that the proposed use or deviation from SPA standards is justified by exceptional design over and above the standards of the SPA, and that any proposed use can provide evidence that it brings a benefit to the community and does not create any nuisance or public safety concerns. And finally, the development requires a design review to determine consistency with both the countywide and North Watt Corridor design guidelines. This is a quick view of the proposed landscape plan, which includes buffer planting along the northern property line and a plant pallet that is consistent with the requirements of the corridor plan. This is a view of the proposed building elevations. These are consistent with the standard prototype for the Popeyes franchise and remain unchanged through the project review. Before I get to staff's analysis of the project, I do want to touch on advisory body recommendations, which were mixed. The North Highlands CPAC met in July of 2021 and did recommend approval of the requested entitlements with a unanimous vote. The support was in the context of replacing a vacant property along the corridor with an active use. The design review advisory committee met in June of 2021 and also recommended The Design Review Advisory Committee met in June of 2021 and also recommended that the project be found in substantial compliance with both the countywide and the North Watt Corridor design guidelines, and with the addition of an outdoor seating area, which the applicant did modify in order to put in place at the front of the project site.
Hold on real quick here, Jessica. Supervisor Serna has a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So with regards to what you just, what I think you just said, in terms of the context of the CPAC decision, it was simply about, it was presented to the CPAC only as, you know, should there be an active use or not? Or should the active use be a Popeyes?
The presentation to the CPAC touched on both the corridor plan goals and the overall context of the site, and it was the CPAC themselves that voted to recommend approval because, in their mind, having an active use on the site was preferable to continuing having it be vacant, even if the active use may not be necessarily consistent with the corridor plan vision.
Okay, so they were full knowledge, understanding of the specific type of activity?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Okay. So moving on to the Planning Commission, they did recommend denial of the project, citing the requested deviations from the corridor plan development standards and the auto-oriented nature of the project. The Commission did suggest that this corridor plan and other special planning area ordinances be brought back to the affected communities regularly to evaluate changing community sentiment and market conditions, and to see if amendments to the ordinance may be advisable. Staff does want to note that one Commissioner did vote no on the denial recommendation, citing a feeling similar to the CPAC that some development on the site was preferable to continued So now we come to staff's analysis. In brief, staff is bringing this project to the Board with a recommendation for denial. This recommendation is due to a number of inconsistencies with general plan and the corridor plan policies. First, the proposed project is inconsistent with general plan policies related to commercial corridor reinvestment, transit-oriented development, and balanced land use patterns. The North Watt Corridor is specifically called out as a commercial corridor targeted for reinvestment and transit-oriented development in the general plan's land use element. As proposed, this project is not of the development intensity called for by the general plan in the transit corridors. Second, the corridor plan has prescribed a minimum floor area ratio for development, which this project falls short of with its small building and expansive parking area. The corridor plan also includes a minimum build-to lines and maximum front yard setbacks, which the project cannot meet due to the orientation of the drive-through. All of these development standards are in place to ensure that development creates an urban form supportive of the high-frequency transit and active transportation anticipated for the Elkhorn District Center. While the applicant has acknowledged this intent, they have not made any significant modifications to their site plan to reach towards this development standards and to support the corridor plan goals. Finally, going back to the findings required for special development permits in the corridor plan that I outlined earlier in my presentation, the corridor plan requires that any deviation granted be justified by a finding that exceptional design over and above the standards of the corridor plan is being utilized. After reviewing the site plan and building design, staff concluded that we could not make that finding. This leads to our final slide, which outlines the actions staff recommends related to denial of this project. The applicant representative is in attendance and is available for questions and is also available to work with staff moving forward. Staff is available to answer any questions and also to support the Board's ultimate determination on this project. That ends my presentation. Thank you.
Jessica, can I ask a question before I turn over my colleagues and possibly hear from the applicant, who will have to swear in, obviously? What were some of the things that you discussed with the applicant? Elements that we proposed that would bring this project more in line with the corridor plan? Can you give me an example of some of those?
I can, I'd be happy to. So I'm bringing up the site plan again here. Some of it is related, a good example is the parking area. They are actually overparked for our parking standards. They are, I think, six spaces over what's necessary for a building this size and the seating that's proposed. Something along the lines of creating a more walkable access point off of Watt Avenue to the building itself was one item that was discussed. Another one was reorienting the drive-through so that that was at the rear of the property as opposed to near the front. There's, I'm sure the applicant could explain business reasons why they have this set up the way it is. When you flip a fast-food restaurant, the design becomes a lot more difficult for the drive-through because you're trying to work with people driving in on the left, and now you have to work on the right. So there, you know, there were discussions. Ultimately, there was not much movement on the site plan itself, though.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
Wait until after the applicant speaks.
Oh, okay. Okay, the applicant's coming up.
So let me swear the applicant in.
Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the Board, Brian Holloway, Holloway Land Company, representing the applicant.
Hold on, Brian, when you just swear you in first.
And I've been sworn?
Can I swear, can I swear you in really quick? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth, so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, and then if you could just state...
Okay. Apologize, I'm coming to this project pretty late. This portion of Watt Avenue has seen little economic activity and investment during the entire lifespan of this plan, which is 10 years old. Seems to me that this plan is pretty outdated, and as I understand, the economic data that drove this plan actually predated the Great Recession. The plan sort of encourages big-box retail in this section, and, I'm sorry, between COVID and the Great Recession and the economic realities, big-box is not going to happen here. So I think that the lack of economic activity really warrants this small catalyst project that could really create some activity in this portion of North Watt that has seen little happen over the last 10, maybe even 15 years. So, and I think that really came out in the CPAC hearing, which, interestingly enough, no one from the development team was actually at the CPAC. Staff presented it, and the CPAC supported the project unanimously without the developer or the architect or anyone else from the development team being there, which is, personally, I've never seen that happen before. So that was pretty telling to me that the neighborhood and the community sees the need here. So my understanding is that staff has prepared alternative findings and conditions of approval, and we are okay with those, and urge the Board to support this project. And ready to take your questions.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Brian. Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to ask you, Brian, on the walkability on the Watt Avenue part of it, I guess because you can't have a drive-through and have people walking across the egress from the drive-through, is that the reason you weren't able to make any adjustments there?
Yeah, that's often the case. I've seen these drive-through projects where they can create a textured walkway across the drive-through exit, and it's not uncommon to do that. It can be done safely because, you know, the vehicles are stopped at the window, and there's an opportunity to see vehicles coming for the pedestrians, and for the pedestrian to be seen by the drivers.
So I've had quite a bit of time with Todd Smith and planning, and I've reviewed this, and I, and I just inherited North Highlands, so I have a special desire to have good things come to North Highlands, and you don't always have private investors that want to invest in a corridor. And in looking at this, you know, there were several considerations that kind of stood out. The first thing was that this is really, you know, they're wanting, the North Watt Corridor Plan is wanting to encourage commercial and big-box. They want less auto-oriented, you know, focus. But when you really think about it, after what's happened in the last few years, it's hard not to, it's hard to think that someone wouldn't want to have some kind of a Plan B, you know, and why they wouldn't be focused on auto-oriented, because the last three years, that was how a lot of the businesses survived. They had the ability. In fact, from what I understand, some businesses like Chipotle, you know, really are beginning to focus more on auto-oriented drive-through just because it's better for business. And I, I know there's, you know, we talked about the large parcel next door and the possibility that this owner could potentially partner with parcels next door for some kind of a mixed-use or a higher-density residential use, but given that this is such a small parcel, it's like, what do you do with such a small parcel for, for a mixed-use commercial and residential project? And, you know, I, I think the market has changed since the general plan and the SPA, and I know we're just beginning to explore, you know, we're going to be diving into updating our general plan in the next year or two, by 2030, I think. And I, and so, you know, given that this is an owner who seems to, you know, he's already has success on the corridor, but he would like to secure his restaurant on his own property. He would like to have, own the property and not be a tenant on the property. So that's a good thing. That brings a business owner who is invested in the commercial corridor. And, and I feel the same way about this as I feel about a lot of conversations around other areas of my district, like Orange Vale, where nobody else is wanting to invest in this corridor, and we have this person right here, right now, who wants to make a significant investment that's going to improve the corridor. And so I would like to find a way to support this, and I appreciate that staff have worked with me to try to figure out how we can make that happen. And I, I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but that's what I would like to see. I would like to see if we can, see how we can make this work for this property owner.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Before I turn over to Supervisor Hume, so we were all just provided a new attachment to findings and conditions for approval. I just heard the applicant say the applicant would accept all of these. Is staff changing its position based on these if the applicant accepts these conditions?
So staff, Todd Smith, your Planning Director, staff did prepare those documents, attachment to the findings and conditions of approval, special development permit, use permit, in the event the Board felt that it could make findings in the affirmative for the project to go for approval rather than staff's recommendation. So staff's recommendation stands. We are providing those documents to the Board in the event the Board wishes to approve the project.
And I just want to say I appreciate, I appreciate your, and I see your rationale, but on the other side of it, in the real world, this is a bird in the hand, you know, I view this as an opportunity for North Highlands. So I just wanted staff to know I appreciated their position.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Can you indulge me for a couple more moments here? So Todd or Jessica, could you go through these conditions for approval and just kind of highlight, you know, what conditions, if any, are in this that you think mitigate some of the, or potentially, if they mitigate some of the concerns that are articulated in your justification for the denial?
Jessica Brandt, I do think, you know, some of the items that Supervisor Frost brought up related to the economic benefit of this project helps with the findings related to the corridor plan. So one in particular for the special development permit talks about, let's see here, the proposed use provides evidence that it brings a benefit to the community and does not create any nuisance or public safety concerns.
So that's a find, I'm just curious, Jessica, is there any, is there any specific condition that here today the applicant is willing to accept that the applicant wasn't willing to accept before this hearing today? I guess that's my...
No, no, they were, yeah, they were in agreement with all the conditions.
It's more in terms of the findings, a different...
Correct.
Okay, all right. And so another question I have before I turn over to Supervisor Hume, is this area included in the Complete Streets area, Todd? Does it go that far north?
That's a good question. Are you referring to the DOT project?
Yes, yes.
I don't know. I'll hand them in and turn to staff and see if we have...
Okay. Because that's going to really revitalize this corridor and really change the, you don't know. Okay. Maybe we can, maybe we can, someone can phone a friend, Ron Vacari, and get that information. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I don't have any questions for the applicant's representative if we wanted to let Brian sit back down.
Okay. Brian, I guess you can have a seat for now. Don't go anywhere.
Okay, I'll go have a seat. Thank you.
Did you want staff back up?
No, no, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the briefing I've had on this item, and it's an interesting application, if you will, in sort of the academic enterprise of planning. And I don't have anything opposed, per se, to this use or to this type of use, but I know that, you know, when you put a special planning area in place, you do so in order to lay out a long-term vision. And sometimes those visions are longer-term than not. But I know that with the Complete Streets that we just talked about, the Green Means Grow program that we just heard a report on at STA the other day, the Chair apparently is going to bring bus rapid transit to this corridor. So it's an important revitalization scheduled to happen. That being said, I certainly heard from my colleague Supervisor Frost relative to people investing in a underserved area and wanting to make the commitment to ownership, which is a good thing. It's a little bit muddled by the fact that this is a relocation of an existing use, and so it's not necessarily a net new add to the corridor. So I guess all of this is a long way of saying that I can see staff's point of digging in and doubling down on what we've committed to, and I can also appreciate that, given the constraints of this site, there's not really a lot else that you could do with just this one parcel, lacking a larger, more comprehensive proposed development. But this is an interesting area, which is kind of the confluence of three different supervisory districts. And so I've heard from one of my colleagues, I would look to hear from the other two, but I would, you know, if put to a decision right now, I'd probably be more inclined to hold the line, but, but only in the, you know, short term that we see some actual good activity and investment put into this corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in the interest of being one of the other two supervisors that Supervisor Hume made mention of that he'd like to hear from, I want to oblige that request and say that I tend to agree with him in terms of holding the line, so to speak. And the reason why is, I guess, as a, as a planner, as someone that's been a professional planner and project manager in the past, this is one of those instances where I really, well, I know it's of interest to kind of approve something because there is immediate investment opportunity. It really makes me question, why do we have long-term planning efforts in the first place if we're going to kind of push them by the wayside in any event? So it, for me, it's kind of a fundamental decision steeped in, you know, respecting long-term, the long-term planning... long-term, the long-term planning vision for the area. I get, I totally understand the eagerness to, to respond affirmatively when there is, again, private interest in developing a site that has been long vacant. But if we choose to kind of ignore the intent of the SPA and, and approve this or vote contrary to the staff recommendation for denial, I guess it just makes me question further, why are we going to entertain future SPAs? So that's kind of the context in which I see our decision today.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. I'll look to Todd and Jessica. Have you heard back from DOT yet on that?
We have, actually, we looked it up on our handy-dyed devices that we have.
If they only had a way.
Yeah. This project is outside the scope currently of the, at least the initial phase of the Watt Avenue Complete Streets project. I do know, however, that DOT is working on an RFP for the northern portion of Watt Avenue, which will be probably coming later. Don't have a specific timeframe yet, though.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think that's relevant to the discussion, certainly in, in terms of Supervisor Hume's comments. You know, I'm torn by this. I agree with a lot of the sentiments of my colleagues, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Hume. But I think, you know, these special planning areas, some of which are more restrictive than this one, this one, it seems like a lot, there are some bases for the recommended denial here that are more interpretive in nature. This isn't, there isn't an outright ban on drive-throughs, for instance, in this, in this corridor plan. Is that, is that accurate, Todd? Whereas in some other SPAs, that is the case, there is a ban. I know I asked you two questions, but.
Yes, that is correct. There's not an outright ban on drive-throughs in the Northwatt Avenue Corridor Plan SPA.
And as a, I think these, these plans, Supervisor Serna is absolutely correct. I agree 100% that we have to respect these, these plans that are, were put in place, some of which were put in place a long time ago, and they have not had the desired effect. I would, I would argue that in some occasions, it's had the opposite effect, and it has, I think, deterred investments. So that's, and I struggle with that in my district, areas of my district that I still have, that were, this was in District 3 just a short time ago. And so I, I look at, at these and I think, rather than, I mean, obviously, the best approach is not to make a change or deviation as a one-off, the better idea is to have a, a more comprehensive planning approach to some of these corridors and consider other initiatives like the Complete Streets Project or the Green Means Go, and how can we re-envision maybe some of these plans in light of other efforts, other attention in some of these areas that, let's face it, have really been, I think, the victim of a lot of inequities over, over the decades. The, but I counter that also with having served on a CPAC myself and Carmichael. And, you know, we think about these plans, and I think planners look at them sometimes in the abstract. I know, you know, I put a lot of weight in what the CPAC members think and say because they're living in these communities and they see these empty lots and they're desperate for something, anything to happen there. So I tell, you know, those are, I struggle with this one. This is, I think this is a tough one for me. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I think, you know, to some, to some of the point that you're stressing, I do think we should make the decision with some sense of caution because I think it does set somewhat of a precedent and a cumulative one at that, that if we're going to get into the business of developing special planning areas and eventually kind of ignoring the intent of them, you know, the next applicant that comes in and wants to deviate from the vision and mission of a, of a SPA is going to be able to look back if we vote other than what staff has recommended today and say, well, you did it in that SPA because you, you know, you simply had a willing investor. Well, the next willing investor may come along in the near future and make the same, make a similar argument that plans are there to be, you know, ignored. And so again, I look at this from kind of a fundamental value of planning perspective. And if, you know, and if we're not going to make our decisions pursuant to the, this SPA, then let's go back and change the SPA. Let's, let's kind of look at it comprehensively. That's the, the whole idea of comprehensive planning. So I guess that's just another consideration I think we should be considering is the fact that, you know, this, this could be somewhat precedent-setting.
Yeah, no, I definitely appreciate that. And I think, you know, what I'd like to see, regardless of what decision this board makes today, is when we're looking at these SPAs, what can we, where, where in the county, especially these commercial corridors, can we look and see where that SPA, the passage of that SPA has not had the desired effect? What can the county do to either slightly, I know it's Todd, I'm going to finish on you. What can the county do to slightly change it? Or what can the county do to effectuate or bring to fruition, I guess, some of the, the objectives of these SPAs, right? I mean, I think that's part of what we're talking about. Before I go back to Supervisor Frost, yes, Todd, you had a comment?
Just to add on a little bit to what I'm hearing so far and provide a little bit more context as to, obviously, that this particular SPA adopted in 2012, we're looking at a decade since. Staff is working on currently, separate from this project, two different things related to infill in general. One is obviously looking at the regulatory structure of whether it's a zoning code or SPAs that are proving to be a barrier to the type of infill development that we desire as Sacramento County. Secondly, last fall, November of 2022, staff engaged through the Green Means Go program with SAICOG and the Urban Land Institute to take a deeper dive on this particular corridor. And we selected it because we as staff and working on these types of projects and trying to implement the SPA see some of these issues on a recurring basis. And so I mentioned that because that was a pretty robust effort. In November of last year, we did a week-long series of stakeholder meetings with not just property owners, but development interests, special districts along the Northwatt Corridor to find out what's working, what isn't working, what do we need to do from a regulatory perspective, as well as from an investment perspective, whether that's public infrastructure or similar. I mention all that because we now have that report, and I am working, and Dave is working, and Troy is working with SAICOG staff to put together a presentation to the board for next month, which would help inform any potential revisions that we might want to make to this particular SPA.
Okay. No, thank you. I think that's, that's, that's great. And obviously, at some point, that would all, there'd be a presentation to the CPAC as well, right? So the, so the local community members would know that, hey, you haven't been completely forsaken here because of limitations in the SPA. We are working to see what the county can bring to bear to try to, try to spur, you know, develop an investment in that corridor. Okay?
Yes, it will eventually make its way to the CPAC as well.
Okay. Supervisor Frost.
Well, I was just going to bring up the, the point that some of the SPAs are, they're not as complete or as detailed as they need to be in order to break ground. Like, and I, I'm not sure, like, an example is Orangeville, you know, there's a whole lot of detail that the community could not come to terms with when they were creating that SPA, that they just ended up creating it. But there's more, there's more to, decisions to be made as far as where the ingress and egress will be, you know, on corridors, on the, on the commercial corridor. And so that, plus the fact that there's a general plan and community plans and SPAs that seem to dates, outdate or, you know, come at different times and conflict and overlap, and the market is constantly changing. And so I guess, you know, holding to, you know, a hard line to something that I'm not sure is as defined as we might be assuming. Do you know what I'm saying, Jessica? It's like, what if this could be fit great? What if, what if we can work around this as we're updating the SPA? I mean, and why can't we work around it as we're updating it?
That's certainly something that we can consider. Obviously, we don't have that work done today to enable the board to, or at least staff to make a recommendation for approval, but perhaps it's something to throw into the mix as part of the conversation in this project. The applicant may be willing to continue working with us if the board wishes to continue this item until such time as we complete that work or they potentially make some project revisions. I'm not sure. Perhaps the applicant may want to come back after hearing the board's full deliberation on this.
I don't know. Maybe a response from the applicant at this time.
We're always ready and able to sit down with staff and see what we can do to work these out. Just think, one thing I want to say is, as a, as a planner, as a trained planner, is one of the things that is frustrating is that sometimes the plans like this one are outdated and the world has moved beyond this, the plan that was projected here and anticipated. And so, you know, it's like, we're seeing office buildings that are, for the most part, very, very empty. We're seeing retail stores and strip malls that are becoming empty. And, you know, you need to deal with the realities of the market, the realities of the world. The world is changing, and sometimes our plans are 10, 15, 20 years old, and they're based on a world that doesn't exist anymore. And it's really important that we are able to update those sooner rather than later. Otherwise, we're just missing opportunities to create a better community for Sacramento County. But we're, we're more than willing to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Well, I mean, from what I'm hearing is, I mean, regardless of the conversation we're having about SPAs in general, there, there is a roadmap for this project potentially to be in compliance with the SPA. So, I mean, if you think there's, it's worthwhile, I'd certainly would, would support a continuance of the matter, see if you can reach an agreement on that. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do. We have one caller.
Okay.
If you could transfer the caller, please. And again, I'll have to take their oath, just bear with me. Hi, caller, please mute the meeting in the background. Okay, and then I'm going to take your oath on this, so if you could raise your right hand and repeat after me, do you, I'm sorry, and just say the, just say, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm? I do. Thank you. Okay. And then if you could just state your name for the record in this statement, you have been sworn.
Yes, my name is Sandy. I'm, yeah, I'm a local or Sacramento-area concerned citizen, and I have been sworn in.
Thank you. And you have two minutes to make your comment, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. No, I just wanted to say that it was so awesome to see you guys talking about this and all these considerations. I mean, they were just very thoughtful. I appreciate Supervisor Frost getting that discussion started because, yeah, I mean, we just came out of COVID, and the economy has not recovered, obviously. And so looking for opportunities like this to improve communities is just wonderful. And, you know, there, there was no precedent to COVID, you know? So we are kind of like all trying to make adjustments based on that. And so hearing you guys all work together to try and come to an agreement to make this happen, I think it's awesome. So I really appreciate that you guys are doing that. So thank you so much for, for, for considering all these other options. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. That concludes your public comments for this item.
Okay. No other comments from the board? Supervisor Frost?
Well, it looks like I don't have the political will to make a decision today, so I'd like to move to continue it and continue working with staff to see if we can work around the specific plan and make good things happen here.
Second.
And what day are we continuing this to?
What do you recommend? Todd?
I personally would recommend not a date certain.
Okay.
So if, if it's not a date certain, I recommend that you drop this and bring it back when you're ready, and it will have to be re-noticed, but that would be easier.
Move to drop.
Okay, second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to drop. Please vote.
Was that Serna?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, unanimous vote.
Thank you, staff. Thank you for the discussion. I think it's a, a good discussion and a preview of a lot more to come, right, Todd? Jessica, thank you, Jessica. Okay.
All right. Okay, for item 47, this is a proclamation of state of local emergency due to the 2023 March storms and floods.
My name is Mary Jo Flynn Nevens, and I'm your chief of emergency services. On March 8th, a series of atmospheric rivers were forecast to impact Sacramento County. One of the storms in this series should be exiting the area today, leaving potential impacts from strong winds and elevated water levels in river systems. The Emergency Operations Center has been activated since March 8th for the series of storms to provide response and coordination of materials for area levees, road closures, and infrastructure damages. Also on March 8th, the governor included Sacramento County in his proclamation of emergency for storms and assisted the county with pre-positioned high-water equipment and other resources. Sacramento County is currently under a continued local emergency from the December-January 2022-2023 winter storm events that caused damages throughout the county. The county's efforts to address the impact of the December-January storm events are ongoing. This new storm event requires a separate local emergency proclamation in order for the county to obtain assistance necessary to address the experienced and anticipated impacts of this new storm event. On March 10th, the president declared an emergency that named Sacramento County. The emergency declaration authorized FEMA to identify, mobilize, and provide at its discretion equipment and resources necessary to alleviate the impacts of the emergency. Emergency Protective Measures, or Category B, limited to direct federal assistance under the Public Assistance Program, is provided at 75% federal funding. Current response activities include activation by the Department of Human Assistance, human assistance, of surge-capacity sheltering, weather respite, and motel voucher program with a capacity to serve nearly 500 people. The Emergency Operations Center has identified three locations in the south portion of the county that are on standby as evacuation facilities should there be a need to issue evacuations, so receiving centers for sheltering. Additionally, the Department of Transportation is monitoring roads and closing roadways impacted by flooding, and regional parks has closures that will remain until further notice. The National Weather Service Sacramento has issued a flood warning from March 14th at 8:40 PM to March 15th at 10:00 PM, as portions of the Sacramento County along the Cusumnes River are forecast to reach flood stage during those times. And the very non-technological graph that I'm showing you right now indicates that forecast flood stage, which is in green, the red is the guidance that we anticipate coming after that. So the March today at 9:00 PM is when it's forecast to hit flood stage. This is at the Michigan Bar Gauge, that is east of Rancho Marietta, and the McConnell Flood Gauge looks to just touch over flood elevation on March 15th at 11:00 AM. These numbers could change. These numbers could change this afternoon with additional forecasts provided by the National River Forecast Center, I'm sorry, the California-Nevada River Forecast Center. Additional rain is expected within another week, although that rainfall looks to be not as impactful at this point in time. We'll get more detail on additional storms within about a seven-day window or sooner. And I just want to remind the board that we continue to be vigilant in the impacts of additional atmospheric rivers, along with being cognizant of the fact that we have a significant snowpack in the mountains, and that snow must eventually come downstream at some point in time. So additional impacts on that watershed through either snowmelt or, or storms are something that we're watching very carefully. We are recommending that your board take action to ratify the local proclamation of emergency for the 2023 March storms and floods, and direct the director of, the director of emergency services to return to the Board of Supervisors at least every 60 days until the emergency is terminated, or with a recommendation if there is a need to continue the local emergency. With that, I am available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mary Jo. It's always great to see you, but we didn't expect to be seeing you so much at the beginning of the year this year. I don't see any, any board members queued up to speak, Supervisor Hume?
I'd be happy to defer chair if you'd like.
No, please, go ahead.
Well, I just want to, first of all, extend my thanks and appreciation to you personally, as well as I've heard from constituents, that just want to say particularly RD800 and folks in the Wilton community, what a great job OES has done to provide the support needed. In addition to that, the National Guard has provided two emergency response units that are capable of traversing high water just in case. I hope that this round of storms proves to be as non-consequential as Friday's potential flooding was, but hope is not an emergency response strategy. And so I appreciate everything that you're doing. I know the community of Wilton appreciates it, and, you know, I just ask that everybody pray for cold weather, because the rain is one thing, but if we get a lot of snowmelt, we're, we're going to be in big trouble in a hurry. And then once we get through this, you know, I know I've been committed to working on the restoration and the, and the resilience efforts going forward, and so I'd also like to commend our Legislative Affairs Director, Elise DeBoer, for, for putting in a federal request for, for doing a study on how we can manage this whole system better. But Mary Jo, your, your department, again, has just stepped up and shown its mettle, and I just really want to extend my appreciation for that.
Thank you. We have a wonderful team, and I, I'm just here representing an army of people behind me that are working really hard. And so I just want to extend my, my thanks and gratitude to them who have stayed up very late at night working on this effort, making sure that resources are getting to where it needs to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Hume. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Madam Clerk, okay. Well, it's funny, I was just getting a text message from constituents about potholes in Fair Oaks, you know, as we speak because of the storms, and I know DOT is, I think, like 2,000 potholes and 700 and something down trees, and so really appreciate your work and the work of all the county staff responding to these storms. And with that, I will move the adoption of the resolution and directing you, you to return every 60 days.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that takes us to our appointments.
Yeah, so first, we're going to do your own ranks appointments to the Area 4 Agency on Aging Governing Board, and specifically, this is for Supervisor Frost's alternate seat. Pardon me, I appoint Rose Megan as my alternate, please. Okay, thank you. I will make that update on your own ranks appointment master matrix, and we'll get that redistributed out. And so now we can move on to your appointments. And let me find my appointments. Oh, here we go. Okay, for item 49, you're continuing to March 28th, the Building Board of Appeals, Human Services Coordinating Council, Maternal, Child, and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Behavior, Health, Youth Advisory Board, Sacramento County Youth Commission. You're continuing to April 11th, the Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, North Highlands-Foot Hill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. You're continuing to April 18th, Assessment Appeals Board, Cemetery Advisory Commission, County Service Area 4C Delta, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, we have first, the Adult and Aging Commission.
Chiefs recommend continuing to April 18th.
Got it. Next, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Frost?
I nominate Matthew Kearney.
Okay, and then, would you like to continue the remainder to April 18th?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I'll take care of that. Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Desmond?
Reappoint Alex Carl and Mikhail Skvarla, continue remainder to April 11th.
Got it. Carmichael Old-Foot Hill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to April 18th.
Children's Coalition.
Chiefs recommend continuing to March 28th.
Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council.
Continue to April 11th, pending interviews.
And Mr. Hume?
Continue to April 11th.
Got it. County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes. We'll start with Ms. Frost.
Please continue to April 18, 2023.
Thank you. And then Mr. Hume?
I would like to nominate Kara Lane.
Okay, thank you. Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Mr. Hume?
Continue to April 11th.
Disability Advisory Commission, Mr. Desmond?
Chiefs recommend nominating Charles Labor and continuing the remainder to April 18th.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee?
Chiefs recommend continuing to April 18th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, we'll start with you, Mr. Det, well, you're, it's you.
Reappoint, please reappoint Chad Bowman and Katrae Wood, and continue the remainder to March 28th.
Got it. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Serna?
Please continue to March 28th.
And Public Health Advisory Board?
Chiefs recommend nominating Mark Borges and Deanna Drake, continue remainder to March 28th.
Got it. Recreation and Park Commission, Mr. Desmond?
Continue to April 18th, please.
Mr. Hume?
I'd like to nominate Dan Gonzalez.
Thank you. Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee?
Chiefs recommend nominating Kayla McDonald and Sina.
Thank you. And last but not least, is Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Hume?
Continue to April 18th.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay, thank you. Next, our county exec comments. David?
No comment.
Any comments? Reports, announcements from board members? I don't see any. We have 52 through 60 are receive and file. With that, I will adjourn the open session, and we will be going up to closed session on the second floor of South Conference Room, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Recording.[1779.36]